Time is 8:48. We'll begin our council budget hearing today. Today is where the council votes on council motions, motions that have been made throughout the budget hearings that we've had thus far. So we have 11 budget motions that were made Tuesday, Wednesday, the 6th, 7th, 13th, and 14th. So we have 11 that we're going to be voting on. Just as an item of housekeeping, council members still reserve the right to make motions until this process is finished. So we'll hear discussion from council members and debate these 11. You may hear a council member make another motion, and then that means that we will also hear and discuss and vote on that. In terms of housekeeping, the city clerk has requested members, when you make a motion and a second, to be a little bit louder so that that can be recorded. So I'm sure if you favor something, that you can let out a more robust, as we call, as we say in the Marine Corps, "sound off." So sound off and let the clerk and the folks who are here hear you. The second item of housekeeping is that there is no public comment when the council votes on budget motions. So the public comment on all 11 have been heard on the day that that was presented, and so there will not be public comment today. It is closed for that item, those items. And the other item that I wanted to address, Madam Clerk, if you could, let's vote electronically for all the budget items, so that way there's no confusion, and folks will be able to see the results of that vote. So we'll vote electronically, folks will sound off when they're making motions and seconds, and then public comment for those items is closed. So with that, we can begin. City Attorney, are we right on, or is there anything that you wish to address this morning before we begin?
No, it sounds like you're ready to go.
Okay. All right, well then with that, we will hear the first, or we will discuss the first motion. This is affecting the City Attorney Department, adding $50,000 to the City Attorney's budget for the purpose of law clerks, made by Member Baines. And of course, colleagues, if there is no discussion or anything, then you can request a vote.
Yeah, I wasn't, I'm not exactly sure. I think during the City Attorney's presentation on the first day of budget, I think we discussed this matter, and I think that he made it clear his need and hope for that, particularly with the work that they're doing with code enforcement. So that was the background of the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Member Brandow?
Is this a?
Yeah, this is a time if you're gonna ask questions, or?
I just want to be reminded on what some of these are for. So I'm gonna ask the City Attorney to review that about law clerks. Again, like, how many law clerks are, can we hire with $50,000, and what is the plan?
Yes, the law clerks, these positions are designed to help DARM in prosecuting administrative citations for those things that are not otherwise asset.
Yeah.
They can respond directly to a lot of issues. They can help the inspectors prosecute violations, and they can also help out in going to court. We're paying them between $20 and $25 per hour as temporary employees. So we have no limit on the number of them we hire because they're part-time.
Okay.
$50,000, so that may get us probably halfway through the year, depending upon the demand for their time. We thought we'd be conservative at first, but that's the purpose of it.
And then, in my opinion, they could potentially help the city recover more money through these fines and the cases that they get involved in. Is that correct?
That's true. So there may be some partial offset in cost recovery, too.
Okay. So I'm gonna be supportive of this. Oliver, he's busy. I'm gonna be supportive of this, and so then at the end of, say, at the mid-year budget review, can you tell us how much, you know, the effectiveness of these law clerks and how much we've recovered through their endeavors?
We can do that. Also, mid-year, if it looks like we have some savings in our budget otherwise, then we can use that to keep funding this, too.
Perfect. Thanks, Oliver. You were talking, but I'm gonna support that. It's very, yeah, good idea.
Okay, the screen is clear. Are there any more comments or questions?
All right, well, I just, you know, and the City Attorney and I have talked about this, and I just confirmed this with our budget director. What we'll just do, because I agree that there's an opportunity to, there's a cost recovery component of this, so what we'll do is we'll adjust the amount of revenue coming in from citations, administrative citations, et cetera, and then we can come back and look at this as a mid-year, so the final budget will show a slight increase in order to cover these expenses.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, well, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item two, also affecting City Attorney's office, adding $170,000, the cost of two legal investigators. Member Brandow, you made the motion.
Yeah, and this is really similar to the last motion, just a different type of personnel that's needed. This one is to really expand the asset team to meet the demand that's being put on it so far in the city and looking forward. So really, it's to expand our ability to go after the bad apples that are plaguing our community in slum housing, and to prosecute them more effectively, more quickly, and to begin to send the message to our community that we're very serious about our approach to slum housing. So the City Attorney has made the case that we need two more people to do this, and so I'm gonna be very supportive of that, and that's why I made the motion.
And as was the case with the other motion, we'll make the associated adjustment in the revenue as well, and then again, we'll come back mid-year to talk about the effectiveness of these positions as well as the other two law clerks.
Perfect. Thank you, Bruce.
Just really quick, Council President, I've already accidentally pushed the yes button to support this, but, so I guess I've given away my secret here, I'm gonna support this. But I think, as you said, Councilmember Brandow, I'm supportive of this. I think they comped the motion with the legal secretaries, and this actually complement each other for the work that we're trying to do in code enforcement in DARM. So thank you for the motion.
Okay, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item three, this would affect the Police Department, adding $25,000 to continue the report writing station in District 4. The motion was made by Member Capriolio.
I think it speaks for itself.
Thank you. The screen is clear. Let's?
So for clarification, what the council member is looking for is whatever the net difference is between what we're currently paying or allocated and what's contained in the budget to pay for the report writing station at Shaw and Sixth. You would like to have whatever that net balance is allocated to additional opportunities for report writing stations somewhere else in the district.
That's correct, and this would help facilitate that thought, or effort.
Go ahead. So Councilman Capriolio, so tell me about the report writing stations. I mean, I remember when we implemented that first one. So are they being used, are officers using them?
We haven't had a chance to have a grand opening yet, so we're in the process of accommodating the requirements necessary to get that open.
The one on Shaw and Sixth is not open?
Correct.
Okay. Who has a report writing station in their district?
I do.
Okay, let me ask you then, have you seen officers taking advantage of it?
It's not open yet. We are having our grand opening on June 28.
Fantastic, so we get to make an announcement. Oliver, you have one.
Yeah, and let me say this. I think that as, Paul, Councilmember Capriolio is one, this motion is a good thing. Report writing stations, in my opinion, in districts are good things. We don't have enough of them throughout the city. When I was a police officer, we had many more, and officers utilized them frequently. It is a place for an officer to be able to stay in the district without having to go all the way back to the station, potentially clean up any paperwork they have to do, maybe freshen up and use the restroom, eat their lunch, but it allows them to stay in close proximity, and they're usually in their beat sectors. Now, the truth of the matter is, we probably need a lot more in order to make it easier for officers, but we don't. So in the past, report writing rooms have been used quite a bit. I think now they're not used as much, but it's because I don't think we have as many. So I think the more we add, we add report writing rooms in districts and let officers know that they're there, you'll see that utilization of something like that potentially could go up.
And then, Bruce, what is the cost for a report writing station? Is the 25 grand that Councilman Capriolio set aside, does that open a report writing station, or just fund one for a year, or?
So the one in the Tower District, I think it's around $15,000, $1,500 a month, so at 12, that's $18,000. And the one in Councilmember Caprio's district, we've got for $4,800 a year, $1,800 a year.
$4,800?
Yeah, $4,800. So one is about $15,000, the one in Councilmember District 4 is $4,800.
$4,800?
$4,800.
To open one for a year, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, all right. Well, I-
So in theory, there'd be $20,000 and some change left over for other report writing stations in his district.
Okay. Well, I'm just, you know, Councilman Capriolio, I'm gonna support that, and I was from the beginning, but I'm using the things that we're voting on today as also opportunity for me to catch up on how effective things have been. So if we've had one in the past, I'd like to hear about it. So hearing from Councilman Baines is really helpful, but I'm totally supportive of that.
And City Manager, we would be able to, if necessary, on this motion, add, if I do find another location that's more convenient for the district area between Councilmember Chavez and myself, particularly the airport, to fund that, we would be able to have additional funding for that if I, I've got a spot in mind, but it's a little bit more convenient for the southeast area of the city.
So if you have a location, if you could identify that, and then we can engage our broker in the subsequent negotiations.
Okay. Just wanna make sure there's enough funding to take care of that.
Member Bretafeld, you're up.
Yeah, I'm inclined to support this as well, but I would like, we have the Chief Dyer here. Chief, I'd like to hear your thoughts on these stations and how you feel it works within the whole operation.
The stations that are being identified as satellites or report writing, we used to have, as Councilmember Baines said years ago, significant number of them throughout the city in each of the policing districts. Those went away. They are a very effective tool for neighborhoods when in fact officers use them. And what we have to do is encourage officers to use them. Oftentimes, whenever there are units assigned within that particular area, like, for example, downtown, there's a downtown policing unit, so they're going to utilize that satellite office over on Van Ness every single day. The one in northeast, we will encourage our officers to utilize it, and more than likely, they will use it more frequently because of the distance between, well, the distance in northeast Fresno for the northeast policing district. Same with northwest. Those are large geographical districts, so people are going to be more likely to utilize that facility versus going back to the district station for supplies, report writing, whatever the case is. Central is more, even though it's a very concentrated area, the purpose of that is to add a presence of officers in and around the Tower District, which is why we've chosen that particular location. So they serve a lot of different, a lot of different purposes, depending on the district that they're in, but they are very viable. I will say that our budget was $25,000 for the central station. We're gonna need about $18,000 or so probably for the year, so we have about $7,000 left over that we were gonna utilize for the northeast station. If there's an expansion beyond that, then obviously we would need funding for that.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, and with that, the screen is clear. If there are no further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We move now to motion number four. This affects DARM. This is to rebudget the industrial compatibility study funding from fiscal year 17 into fiscal year 18. Member Baines?
Yeah, thanks, Council President, and this is a pretty basic one. We approved this funding last year, it was unspent, and so I'm simply asking for it to be carried over. It's $100,000 to do the industrial compatibility study.
Head Member Brandow?
So my question is, why was it not spent last year, Oliver? Does any of you call Jennifer up, or?
I'm not sure why. They didn't, they didn't get to it last year, but we wanna make sure that we get to it.
Bruce, Jennifer, I don't see Jennifer in the room.
Yeah, Jennifer's tie-up. It's just everything else that was going on this year, we just did not have the time. She, I know Jennifer's working on the scope, so we anticipate having this work completed by the end of this upcoming fiscal year. So we'll get it done this coming year. We just didn't get to it this year.
And so, give you a quick reminder.
Candidly, Member Brandow, I think it wasn't as high of a priority for the department this year, and-
We had the specific plan and-
Like, like things that they have going on. So I've talked to the DARM director. It seems as though they're gonna be able to get to it this year, and we're hopeful, so I just wanna make sure that we keep the money in the budget for it.
Okay. Are you finished?
It's not any new, it's not additional funds, it's simply carryover.
Is this, I guess the screen is clear, I'll go ahead and ask questions. Is this, so this money is from the general fund?
Yes, Councilmember, we discussed this last year, and yes, it's from the general fund.
Okay. All right, then that, I'm satisfied. Do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not as familiar with this study, Councilmember. Is it something you could answer in terms of addressing it, or?
It's, well, the study hasn't, hasn't yet been completed yet, Councilmember, but the idea is just simply to figure out strategically where we should have our industrial parks and what have you. I think it's recognized by this entire body in the city that industrial development is a big deal for job development and job creation. Knowing where to strategically place those developments is important. So as we think about, as the mayor has rolled out, what he believes is important in manufacturing and job creation and job opportunities, these are the types of things that we use as tools to approach these types of issues smartly and strategically.
Okay. And City Manager, do you feel, I mean, is there savings if we don't do this? Do we have staff that can, I mean, we have industrial parks, is there some means to avoid spending this hundred and using it for public safety or something?
Well, again, I think, as the councilman pointed out, we have a very long track record of not thinking or considering the impacts of industrial development on a number of neighborhoods, specifically in West Fresno. And we believe this, while the general plan identifies industrial areas, a lot of it is in West Fresno, we need to be cognizant of the impacts, truck traffic, a lot of other things that impact those residents. So the compatibility study is to identify ways to mitigate those impacts. Staff is at a point with the existing bandwidth that this is kind of a one-off complement to the general plan, so there's a lot of environmental, but also street-level kind of work that needs to be done. So the administration is still supportive of moving forward with this, because we also think it complements a lot of the work that the community has already helped develop with the southwest specific plan. So I think it kinda goes part and parcel with that. And again, we don't want to, as we move forward with trying to improve the overall economic base, we don't want to inadvertently create a situation where that economic opportunity also negatively impacts the quality of life of the residents who already live in West Fresno, because they already are dealing with a lot of those effects based on previous land use decisions.
All right, so interesting, you know, interestingly enough, we did a groundbreaking yesterday where Amazon is going in off of North Avenue, huge industrial park. We've got a plan, I'm speaking with the mayor about the other side of 99 along North Avenue, which is gonna take a very heavy lift. A lot of stuff needs to get done. So in my opinion, as a council member, I believe we already have identified major industrial park projects that are gonna take a lot of money to get off the ground, and honestly, I'd rather just apply this money to some infrastructure need inside of those, inside of the existing plan. So, you know, I've spoken with the mayor extensively about his vision for bringing industry to the city of Fresno. I think we're on a good path, begun by the former mayor and being executed by this mayor, and so I don't, I'm not in a position where I feel like we need a study to tell us where industrial parks are going. We've got our industrial parks outlined. As a matter of fact, if you include the, you know, concepts around the wastewater treatment facility, that's gonna be another huge industrial park area that's in queue behind the one on North Avenue. There's two on North Avenue. So in my opinion, and then if you wanna throw in the high-speed rail and include that as an industrial park area, community, we've got four big industrial park areas kind of in queue, and so I don't, you know, I don't know if we need a study at this time to continue that thought process. So I'm gonna vote no, but if it passes, it passes.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brandow, and you pointed out really good points. None of those areas have actually been studied to the level that we're studying in this study. So you actually highlighted perfectly the reason why we need the study. There are a host of needs that those sites need to make them viable, to make sure that we are in a strategic position to attract new business. We need to make sure, as the city manager said, that we're mitigating for surrounding communities and what have you. We need to do this smartly and thoughtfully. So you perfectly highlighted the reason why we actually need it. I'm sad that you won't be able to support that. I think you generally do support things that support economic development, so sadly, I'm sad you won't be able to support this, but rest assured that everything you said really are the reasons why we are doing the industrial compatibility study.
I wanna remind everybody that's paying attention to this stuff, I believe in, so in industry in the city of Fresno, to the extent that a couple years ago, we had a debate about where to put industry inside the city of Fresno, and I was very critiqued because it looked like we were trying to avoid putting some of that industry in North Fresno. And as you know, Councilman Baines, I specifically created an area in North Fresno where we could put industrial businesses. So we carved out a section along the 99 corridor to put industry in, even in North Fresno. So I'm very supportive of that, but at this point, I think that we've got a lot on our table when it comes to industrial parks, and I'm fine with what we currently have. So, thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Member Baines, I'm not going to support it, because I don't believe the city can afford it this year. So I think that, I would, as a friendly no, I would like to see it come back next year for us to look at, but this year, I understand that, you know, we've got some labor contracts with some of our partners in collective bargaining that are coming up, and I also know that the, that our administration, our mayor are scrambling to identify the funds where we can make ends meet in that way. And so I think that these funds are general fund dollars, and I think that, for me, it would make more sense for us to keep this in mind, because it is an important issue, and then bring it back next year, when hopefully our financial picture will have improved here at the city. So it'll be a friendly no, and I thank you for making that motion. All right, the screen is clear right now. Let's go ahead and vote, let's go ahead and vote electronically. Okay, this item, this motion passes for yes, three no. Okay, moving on to the next one. This is also DARM, similar to fiscal year 17, EDA grant motion. This is to utilize any unexpended dollars from CDBG repayment and EDA grant to be used for affordable housing. Member Soria?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, and then if the city manager wants to chime in, because we've been working together on this, I'd wanna make a motion to carry over from fiscal year 16, 17, $544,000, which was left over from this EDA grant, in order for us to fund affordable housing development in the city of Fresno. And what I'll add is, we just saw an article yesterday in the Bee about affordable housing and the crisis that the state is experiencing. We definitely have an affordability issue here in the city of Fresno as well. We know, as we're trying to put affordable housing developments together, the struggle that it is to become competitive, to receive matching funds, and so these dollars, which are a small amount, will help us in achieving the goal and being competitive against other jurisdictions like Stockton or other cities that are beating us to some of the other resources. So it's about leveraging money, and I believe this is an important pot of funding that will allow us to move forward a few development projects that we're looking at here locally. So I'd ask for your guys' support. Thank you.
Member Brandow, you're next.
So this is probably also inside of DARM, right? CDBG funding and grant inside of DARM. Jennifer's not here with us today, so Bruce, tell me a little bit about, so is this using unspent dollars, or it says, yeah, unexpanded dollars from CDBG repayment? So is that just in, are those dollars inside of the CDBG funding stream?
I think the dollars that the council member is referring to, is last year there was a motion to take the balance of whatever was not utilized to match an EDA grant, and take that balance and apply it towards affordable housing project. We have now since identified what the match amount is going to be, and therefore, there's $544,000 of general fund that was committed to affordable housing last year, after we made that match and figured out how much that was gonna be. So what I think the council member's motion is to carry the remaining balance of 544 and apply it towards the use as it was originally intended last year when the budget was adopted by council.
All right. And then can, so I guess the CDBG is throwing me off here. Is that money, could these CDBG dollars be used for other CDBG-related projects?
So those monies were actually not CDBG dollars, they were allocated for CDBG repayment. If you recall, during the last presentation, I asked whether the state has come back to tell us whether we have to do any repayment back, and they haven't. So the only thing that we're waiting on is whether we would have to pay anything back to the, to the government, because of the uses that we've done in the past with CDBG. So that was repayment money.
Got it.
And if anything is left over after repayment, it would go for the same purposes. That was the motion last year. So we don't know yet, it's just still up in the air.
So, and I appreciate that, that was, that was a great explanation. So it really wasn't CDBG dollars, it was a CDBG repayment?
Yes.
Right? And then, we're still not sure whether we need to repay. If we do need to repay, those dollars would go to the CDBG repayment?
Yeah.
If not, you wanna use them to leverage a grant dollar? Is that where the EDA grant part of this motion comes in?
Well, both, yeah, both.
Okay. So how would that work, Councilmember Soria? So if we don't have to repay CDBG, and we can take this $540,000, how does that leveraging work for the EDA grant for affordable housing?
Well, so the leftover money could be used as a grant from the city to a developer that is trying to bring affordable housing development. Right now, we have a few developers that are interested in building affordable housing. I will say there's one in particular in my district that I'm trying to help, and so if we're able to get dollars, what happens is that we can allocate a part of this for a specific project and help leverage other state funding. What we've been finding is that over the course of the last few years, it's becoming very, very competitive to access state dollars to match, to fill that gap. We've talked about how expensive it is, right, to build affordable housing, and so the Stocktons of this world are out beating us because we don't have enough affordable housing dollars to match and cover that, and make it competitive.
Okay, all right. And Bruce, is the administration supportive of that?
Yes.
Concept?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, the screen is clear. Please cast your votes. Item passes unanimously. Thank you. We move now to the sixth budget motion. This is to request an annual report from the SPCA, including budget detail as part of funding requirements. Member Soria?
So this motion, I believe we made when we got a, oh, when we asked a few questions about SPCA, we just want to have a little bit more transparency and for the public, so I think it'd be important for us to, if we don't already, you know, if they're not already required to submit a report to the council, so that we know what work is being done. We are giving them an allocation, an increased allocation this year of, I think, a little bit over $100,000. So I'd just like, you know, for purposes of accountability, if they can report back and see what is it that they're doing, their outreach services and so forth. And then I know you had added-
Yeah, I was just happy to second that motion.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, the screen is- All right, the screen is clear. Do councilmembers have any questions or comments? No? All right, let's go ahead, cast your votes, please. This motion passes unanimously.
Question for you, Council President. So we're requesting that they provide us an annual report, but they're not required to. Is that correct?
City manager, I think they do provide something.
They provide us some data as far as number of animals that they take in, intake, costs associated with veterinary care, and then also the euthanasia rate. What I'm hearing from the council, and we're going to follow up, and we've already reached out to SPCA, we're going to try to schedule a workshop sometime in September, maybe October. But we understand the sense of urgency that council wants to get a better understanding of what the role, the SPCA, what are we getting? We've heard some conversations around the need for some additional animal control officers and how we can try to create that opportunity. And then the second half of that. So we'll do the workshop, and then the other part of that is that, like any other department, when they present their budget next year, you would like them to provide an annual report of their performance. So the workshop will provide you the opportunity to kind of start framing what you need to see as far as changes in those quarterly reports, if there is any additional information, and then we can summarize that when they make their presentation next year.
Do they, in the reports that they give to the council, break down the expenditures of where the $3.6 or $3.8 million goes, how they utilize that?
Yeah, they break it down by veterinary expenses, housing, food, things like staff, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We move now to the seventh budget motion. This is the city council budget. To appropriate $200,000 to create a legal defense fund. Member Soria.
I think it, this motion was made because there is a tremendous need in our community. I know that there is a number of folks that will say that it's not within our role and it's not in our jurisdiction to do, address this issue. But we all know that since the presidential election, there has been a lot of sense of uncertainty and fear among our immigrant community. Actually, this month, we celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month. On Thursday, we will be presenting a resolution in support and, to show support for our immigrant community. And so I think that this is a modest investment in us attempting to help provide some seed funding and also leveraging other private dollars to be able to provide really critical legal services for folks that are here, not just undocumented. There's also immigrant families that may have legal status, that may need some services. We know that they're not provided an attorney, just like when you are in criminal court, you're afforded an attorney. When you're in immigration court, you're not afforded an attorney. And I just wanted to put for the record, we haven't spelt out all the details as to how the funds would be used, but just wanted to make sure that I put for the record, this would not be used, or wouldn't be used for any, protecting any criminals. So if someone has, is, is charged with domestic violence or charged for, you know, a crime, we wouldn't be defending them. So that's, I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that. And obviously, the, the details would come if we do get the support this morning, would come at a later time, and then this council would be able to, to support that. But in the meantime, we would be putting these monies for seed money, just to be able to leverage also private dollars to have the resources available for our local immigrant residents. I do just want to thank everyone for, for being here, for the work that you guys have been doing. And I know that there's a lot of work ahead of us. So if we're not successful today, I just say let's continue working hard to ensure that not only are we, are we a welcoming city and value the, really the contributions of all of our immigrants. We know that this is a nation of immigrants, and we value what they've, their contributions, in particular here in the Central Valley, where we know a lot of our immigrants are vital to our agriculture economy, to our construction industry, to our, a number of other sectors where they are providing valuable services and are major contributors to our local economy. Again, thank you. And I hope that we'll get the support from the council.
Thank you, Member Soria. And Member Brandow.
I do have a few comments to make about this. I'm very supportive of immigrants in our country. As a matter of fact, I have no problem in saying, and I've discussed with Councilmember Soria, I'm for comprehensive immigration reform. I think our nation truly needs that, including really sooner rather than later, a safe, productive guest worker program that allows people to come work safely in the United States without threat. That needs to be fast-tracked, in my opinion. Comprehensive immigration reform needs to come soon. We've been demanding it from the federal government for a long time because they've been unwilling to tackle it for lack of courage. The, the states have been suffering, the state of California has suffered, trying to create its own path. However, on this issue, as Councilmember Soria mentioned in her opening comments, there's been a lot of fear since the election of our current president. And I think really this is more political than anything. I want to remind everybody that our last president deported more people than any president in U.S. history. So this didn't happen the last eight years, but it's happening now. And so I think it's strictly political, it's probably part of a, a larger resistance movement. I think it hypothetically damages the city of Fresno. One of the things that I think could probably happen is when we send the message that we're not going to, we're not going to work with the federal government and we're not going to allow ICE to operate. I think you're already seeing it, that in the past, we had a relationship with ICE, apprehended criminals inside of our jail system. And we're sending the message, we no longer want to work with them in, in that regard. So you're going to see ICE now operating outside, inside of the neighborhoods, inside the community. It's a result of the political tact that many of, in this room are taking right now. And so I don't believe that the federal government's going to back off, just because, I think we'll probably end up damaging some of the very citizens many of you are standing up to protect today. So I'm going to be voting no on the appropriating $200,000 to defend illegal immigrants in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Brandow. The screen is clear. Member Baines.
Thank you, Council President. And I'll make my, my remarks brief. I, I think that I queued this up last week with my personal perspective on this as being a, a larger issue. And I want to agree with my dear friend and colleague, Councilmember Brandow. He is right, there is a political tone to this. And we're politicians. So I, I do agree that our current president sadly has made comments that have been demeaning, ignorant, and completely mischaracterize, mischaracterizes our immigrant community, our undocumented community, should I say. And we completely agree that...
Mr. Crowe, can you?
We completely agree that there needs to be...
B.C., or back away from the lectern. Thank you, Member Baines.
We completely agree that there needs to be comprehensive, comprehensive immigration reform. Totally agree with that. I think that there isn't a single person up here that, of good conscience, I should say, that could say that there should not be comprehensive immigration reform. However, as I stated last week, we don't have that. And shame on us if we hide behind the federal government's lack of action on a topic where families are being destroyed today, daily, in our city and across the nation. But we have something to do about this in our city. And so I want to acknowledge the debate about this issue, as I've talked to several of my colleagues about this well before this motion, and I'm sure we'll debate it well after. And, and it's not that there are not, there are, there are, there's philosophical opposition to this, folks, just so you all know. And, and I, I'd be shocked if this vote, if this wins today, and I don't want to minimize the, the philosophical opposition. There are, there are very strong points about, about why we should or should not do this. It's a tricky issue. We are spending general fund dollars on something that is unique. So it's not that my colleagues don't have a strong debate. I, however, feel very differently. I believe that the history of this country demands us to do this today. We, we have seen this before. Our undocumented community is being, is the most vulnerable population we have in this country. And many of them are children. Many of them are living, you know, many of our undocumenteds are living with somebody that is a citizen. And literally, we are breaking up families because we want to maintain, as a country, a labor force that we can exploit. And it's very sad. And so while I think that there's good general philosophical debate, I think that, again, where we are in history today, because of our president sadly, because of his lack of insight and ignorance on what makes our country, what actually makes our country great, the demands upon us as local leaders are before us today to do this very action. So I want to thank my friend, Councilmember Soria, for very bravely putting this forward. You all may not know, but this is a very tough decision for her to do this, because I think we both knew we were walking into a, a losing battle. But she should be commended for her effort and her fight on standing up for what she believes in and standing up for what all of you believe in, and fighting the right fight at the right time. So this is the right fight. We may not win it today, but it is the right fight. So thank you, Councilmember Soria.
Member Brandow.
Yeah, I, it's a tough issue for a lot of folks. I mean, clearly, as I've said before, I, I sympathize with people who, not by their own fault, have ended up being here illegally, either they came here as children and are here undocumented. So I, I sympathize. I understand the difficulty, and they love this country, and they want to remain in this country. And I also want to recognize that I know this is a, it's a tough issue for Councilmember Soria, but she's passionate about it. I've said over and over, I admire her passion. She, this is a very important issue for her. But we are, we are a nation of laws. And I support immigration. I just support legal immigration. And I don't think we, we can choose which laws we want to follow and which we don't. We are a nation of laws. And if we get into the business of deciding which laws we're going to follow and which we're not, we're going to be in trouble as a country. And I recognize also what Councilmember Brandow said. President Obama deported more people than any president in history. And yet, we didn't see people here in the council chambers speaking out against that. So that certainly speaks to the politics of this issue. $200,000, as people talk, it's a drop in the bucket. It's not a drop in the bucket. It's $200,000 of general fund money. It goes to public safety, it goes to city services. There's not a money tree growing in the back here, we would just pluck it off a tree. $200,000 is significant dollars. It belongs to the people who pay taxes, and some of you of course paid for that.
Member Brederfeld, can you wait for a second? Folks, we're going to have to ask for no comment. I know that you may be hearing some things that are coming from the dais that, that you may disagree with, but if, if comments continue, then we'll have to take a break.
So I also...
So, Member Brederfeld, please continue.
Thank you. I also take exception to the comments that continue to criticize our president. I don't share those, that view. He is already, just simply by making this an issue, has helped decrease illegal immigration, people crossing the border. That's a fact. And so it's a serious issue. We can't decide which laws we want to follow. We're a nation of laws. We need to fix our legal immigration system, our legal immigration system. Nobody, nobody disputes that we have a problem with it. But people are here, they come here legally, and that's what I support. We don't have $200,000 laying around just to come up with this funds. I also find it interesting that these folks come to the city of Fresno. The city of Clovis also has illegal immigrants. They could possibly set up a legal defense fund. The county of Fresno could set up a legal defense fund. I'd be very curious to see what those governmental bodies would be willing to put up. I'm not going to support this. I will never support this. And we need to follow our laws and use our city money for public safety and city services.
Thank you, Member Brederfeld. The screen is clear. Member Baines.
You know, forgive me. I wanted to just quickly react to a couple of things I heard Councilmember Brederfeld say that I, that I actually intended to, to address in, in my thoughts, but I'll be short. I just want to make it clear that I, I think we all know it's a, a nation of laws. I don't think anyone disputes that. I think that in times, we forget what the history of this country is. And in many cases, when, when laws are unjust, we do things to civilly disobey them. And had that not happened, you know, to my colleagues, I certainly would not be sitting here. So, and nor would this country even exist if we simply just relied on a nation of laws. Revolutionary War started because they didn't, our ancestors not agree with the laws. So I don't want anyone out there to be discouraged by the fact, I think we all agree there's an, it's a nation of laws, and I think there are times in history when we know that laws are unjust. This is, there are certain laws about this, this is at such time. But we will always abide by the rule of law. Civil disobedience is encouraged in this country. Our history demands it, and our history speaks of it. So I don't want, I, I wanted to, I meant to say that in my opening comments, and Councilmember Brederfeld actually reminded me that I wanted to address that, because I keep hearing that we're a nation of laws, as if that's all that there is. And as if it's, as if our history and the fact that we're all here is not because some of us decided a long time ago to challenge what we saw as unjust laws. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Baines. The screen is clear, and if there are no more questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Please cast your votes. Yes to appropriate, no. This motion fails for no, two yes with one abstention. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item, which is Public Works. This is to include the Slurry Seal sidewalk project in the five-year CIP. This is a motion by Member Baines.
Thank you, Council, Council President. And this motion doesn't come with any fiscal or financial attachments to it. There's a community in the Jane's, Jane Adams neighborhood.
Member Baines, why don't we go ahead and, and let's wait until council chamber's clear. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I remind you that the council does have business to conduct this morning. If you're not here for the Public Works item, and you don't wish to attend the Public Works item, you please exit council chambers.
Thank you guys for your vote. We voted against it. Thank you. Anybody who voted for it should be recalled.
Yeah, it would be in the public.
So this particular motion doesn't come with...
So, this particular motion doesn't come with any financial obligations this year per se. But there's a, and just for, for the benefit of my colleagues, because I know they may not be as familiar with this particular area, but there's an area on McKinley in between Hughes and Marks, right across the street from Jane Adams Elementary. This area was annexed into the city some years ago and really came in under the old city, I'm sorry, under the old county laws, which don't even require that streets have to have sidewalks or adequate lighting and what have you. So, what I'm, what I'm seeking is for, the, the project already has a slurry seal included in it, in the five-year CIP, but I'd like to get sidewalks included. So, the children that walk to school at the elementary there don't have sidewalks to walk on as they go to school. They, funny enough, they don't have lights in the area, so I've come in and I've put in the lighting. But I, I do need the help of the professional city staff to engineer the road with sidewalks. So, there's already about six hundred thousand dollars in this, in this for just a slurry seal. And I'm going to be asking the staff to include the sidewalks for that, council. It'll take a few years to do, but I need the engineering work and what have you done in order so, so that the students over there can safely walk to school. And they are elementary school students, so it's in the middle of a pretty busy neighborhood. So, that was the onus of the motion. And I know at the time I did it, I didn't give much background, but, but that's what it's, that's what is concerning.
Okay. A few council members punched up. Member Chavez and then Member Brandau.
Very familiar with the neighborhood that Councilmember Baines is talking about. When I was on the school board, we had a number of challenges there with the lack of infrastructure. A lot of folks that use a wheelchair were not able to access certain parts of that campus, so I'll definitely be supportive of that today.
That's Steve.
All right. So, I guess, Oliver, I wanted to ask, so you're not appropriating money for this, though? Is that correct?
Not, no, not, not necessarily. There may, there's a, there are a couple of things that have already been done. Like I said, there's already about six hundred thousand dollars in there over the next appropriate, you know, that have been appropriated in the past for this. I want to expand the project. Now, it's going to be relatively easy to expand because the RDA about 12 years, years ago, actually did the engineering work. So in talking to our Public Works Department, they need to update that. So I think what we can do, in talking to the city manager and the Public Works Director, because there's already some money in there, we can use that to help refresh basically the old engineering report. And then that really gives us the ability to, over the next couple of years, figure out how to pull funding together for it. But we definitely need to, at a bare minimum, get the engineering work updated so we can see what it would take.
And so, and so what, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you want to expand, want to be able to expand the scope of work?
Right. To include, so what we have in, what we have currently is, they're going to, they're going to redo that road right there already.
Right.
But we, what we want to do is we want to add sidewalks. Really, it's, it's kind of a public safety issue for the students on that side of the street that really don't have any sidewalks to walk on. I'm using my infrastructure dollars to put in lighting for them because there were actually no lights along McKinley between Hughes and Marks either. So, I used my infrastructure money to put in the lights and, but obviously, an infrastructure project, including sidewalks, is more expensive than I have.
Have you heard from Public Works what the cost would be to include something?
Yeah, it's about two, it's going to be, ultimately, it's going to be about two to two and a half million. That's, that's kind of the, the estimate. Now, one of the reasons we want to get the updated engineering work done is to figure out if, if in fact that's true. You know, what the current cost would be, if it's gone down or gone up, if anything has changed. I doubt it's gone down, but yeah.
So for two and a half million, it's got, you're, you're actually talking about quite a, a lot of work there. So is it a very, a long area or a lot of ground that's being covered?
If you, yeah, I mean, it's, there are no sidewalks for, between Hughes and Marks. And you, you have Hughes and Marks in your district too, so if you can think-
Yes.
About the distance, right. So yeah, that area, they, they have no sidewalks at all. So it's a pretty decent distance, yeah.
Got it. Okay. I just needed a further understanding. Thank you.
Okay. You got it. And council, just to remind you, I, I definitely realize it's going to take a few years to do the project, but if it's not even in the, the CIP, the five-year CIP, the community has no shot really, really getting the work done. So I probably will be gone when this work is completed, but I at least wanted to get it in, get it, Clint says, thanks, thank God I'll be gone.
I always say, thank God we'll be gone.
But anyhow, we at least want to get it included in the five-year CIP.
All right. All right. The, folks, the screen is clear. If no one else has questions or comments, let's go ahead and cast our votes. Hey, the item passes. Seven to zero. Thank you, council. Three more. Public Works, that any new revenue received from the new statewide gas tax be restricted to contingency and removed and spent only upon supermajority vote of the council, and that such revenue be spent only on improvements to streets and roads, and that it be spent to supplement rather than supplant planned or existing efforts and expenditures. Member Baines, you made this motion?
Right. Thank you, council. And this, this is more of a policy call. And, and the idea, council members, is, and I talked with the city management about this, the idea is really to ensure that the new SB one dollars, assuming that they still stay intact, I mean, we never know what's going to happen, but assuming that they stay intact and this city gets a pretty heavy dispersment over the next, you know, decade or so, that we don't take those dollars and we use them for anything other than, than that work, the, to repair our streets and roads and to make sure that we are not supplanting any other city functions with that work. And we tend to do that. We tend to do that in this body. We, that money will come into the general fund. You know, in some cases, it can be swept up to offset other things, and I want to make sure that does not occur. I want to make sure that the money that is intended to be spent on is spent on. But for, and if not, it would take a supermajority of the council to redirect those funds to something other than, other than the, the street enrollment, road improvement. So, it's really, it's really an effort to ensure that those dollars always stay where they're intended to be spent and not go other places.
Member Brederfeld?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support this because I frankly don't support this tax. I don't support ripping off the taxpayers, people who buy gas another 11 cents, as they've done in Sacramento. I would like to see some way, frankly, that the city of Fresno was able to return it to its taxpayers. We talk about being overtaxed and overregulated, and here's another tax that the geniuses in Sacramento came up with to steal from the people of California. So, I understand, you know, we're going to get this money, people want to set it aside for roads. I would like to set it aside and somehow see if there's some way that it can be returned to the citizens of Fresno. And I've talked with the city attorney to see if that can happen. I don't know if there'll be support for this. I know as soon as politicians get their hands on taxpayer money, they don't want to let it go and they never want to return it, though when they are running for office, they talk about doing that. Well, I want to do that. And so, I won't support it for this reason. And I'd like to see if there's some way that we can somehow, either through a rebate, a credit, some way that we can justify legally returning this money to people who are giving it to us.
Member Brandau and then Member Baines?
Okay. All right. Interesting comments by Councilmember Brederfeld. I want to go back to this real quick on a couple of issues in here, Oliver. Why, why did you feel it needs a supermajority vote of council?
To get the money out?
Right, to redirect it somewhere else. So, let me say that particularly, I'm, I'm glad that I put that in there, you know, given in light of the comments that Councilmember Brederfeld just made, is precisely what we should never ever do. We should never ever use this money to be spent for something other than the streets and roads. And I, I thank him for making my point, why we need to have something like this to ensure that the money is returned to the taxpayers in the form of actual projects to repair our streets and roads. We have a pretty significant gap, council member, as you know. We talk, we talk about it year after year. We probably have a hundred million dollars or so in deferred maintenance just in our streets and roads. And I just wanted to make sure that the council in future years doesn't get, doesn't, doesn't feel like we need to take this money and divert it to something other than the streets and roads. So it kind of locks it, it locks it in to make sure that we, we're not using it for us or anything else.
Okay. And I, and I want to come back with a different question to you, but, but Bruce, what do you think about the supermajority aspect of this?
Like, I understand what the council member Baines is trying to achieve. I guess the only, well, the biggest concern or the concern I would have is that, as I conveyed previously, staff will be coming back with a proposed five-year capital improvement plan.
Right.
And some of the projects, such as the one by Jane Adams, Highway City, there's a project there. These are going to be very capital intensive because of the lack of infrastructure that was, that's out there now. And so, when we create that list of projects, what I would be concerned with, that in order to get an approval to move that list of projects forward, there would need to be a consensus of five council members. So if, that would be, if there's, so I can see him jumping in, so.
Yeah, no, not for that. Do you mind if I clarify?
Go ahead.
Thanks, council member. Not for that, city manager. The, the idea was that if, after the council has approved those projects where the money's supposed to be spent, if in fact, council members wanted to redirect those funds to someplace other than that, is really the intent of this motion. So it really locks, locks the city into the commitment to spend those funds as we all will collectively come up with. Because I know you guys are going to bring a five-year plan on, on how to spend the SB one funds. I think that we'll get there. It'll be tough, as you said, but I think that when we come to an agreement, we don't want to begin to re-divert those funds any, any other place. So, that's the idea.
Well, that's, that's, that works because then, I don't have as much a concern because once you, once the council, once this body with the concurrence of the mayor agree upon that list of projects, then that's the list of projects.
Yeah. And then, so my next question then, so Bruce, have you ever seen money that came in through road taxes diverted to something other than roads?
I've seen some, so I'll use the Calcott Development up in northeast in your district. There was a three-year period in which Measure C dollars were diverted to pay, to basically reimburse the developer for all the off-site improvements, rather than going into, you know, paving other streets that was used to basically help cover that expense for that development to move forward.
Okay. So that was through the FCTA and COG? Those bodies?
No, no, that was through this body. And then, you know, we right now have the Department of Transportation in this budget and well, this previous budget, funding general fund expenses using transportation dollars that, that FAX receives. And again, it's a, it's a appropriate use. I think what, what council member Baines is, is looking at is, is taking these dollars and similarly ensuring that they go into street maintenance rather than being used for things such as funding more officers somehow or funding or buying down the cost of a future development project. He wants it to go specifically into repairing the streets, streetlights and sidewalks that we already own.
Yeah. And, and I'm, so I'm very supportive of monies that are supposed to be spent on streets being spent on streets. Is that the basis of your motion?
It is, council member, because these funds that come in will be general fund dollars. So, so in theory, I mean, I know, I know we are very protective of streets and roads and what have you, but as you know, we're, we're not going to be here for, forever. My worry is that when, when this body, this, the, us here that were present when the funds were received and when the tax was implemented is gone and the institutional memory in, in some cases may be gone, that people could use that money for different reasons. And as a result, we won't get the street maintenance and the road repair that it was intended for. So, that's, that's the idea. If, if these weren't, if these monies could, weren't general fund dollars, I probably would feel differently, but they are. So in a situation like that, you, you and I both know what potentially could happen.
Yeah. And so I'm thinking, but they come into the general fund, they come from the excise tax into the general fund.
Well, for, for purposes of clarification, they do not come into the general fund.
Oh, they don't.
These are, these are transportation gas tax dollars. So they are not general fund dollars. And I think what the council member is getting at is that he doesn't want in the future, these dollars converted into something else other than what they were specifically prescribed to do under the legislation. And I also will preface that with, these dollars have very tight requirements and restrictions. So the, the ability to move money around, while I'm not saying it's completely impossible, the, the additional requirements associated with this new source of revenue are, are very restrictive. So there, there is, the opportunity is going to be probably even more limited than some of the examples I provided.
So, Councilman Baines, that's substantially different than what you're telling us.
Yeah. I thought these were general fund dollars, but if they, if they aren't, the issue is, the supplanting issue is probably more the concern. So what we do every year is we have a number of dollars that are set aside to do street maintenance, street, street maintenance and road repair. In theory, we could take these dollars and use those dollars instead of the general fund dollars to do that. And as a result, shift the general fund dollars someplace else.
Bruce, is that, how can that be monitored in the future? So, say we get 10 million dollars from this excise gas tax to fix roads. It goes into very specific requirements, is what you're, what you just told us. And then, how would we track whether that's truly being supplanted or not? It's be almost impossible.
Well, again, I, I think it goes back to, when we come back with the five-year CIP, this council, this body will vote on that list of projects. And it will have budgets, and it'll have a revenue projection, and it'll have a budget. Once you approve that list, I think what council member Baines is concerned is that someone may come back later on and find out that, oh, we got this other grant or we have this other source of transportation dollars. So we can fund that project that's in that list that's, you know, been designated, and then somehow creatively figure out a way to go spend it somewhere else. Again, as, as a, as a, it may be a gas tax eligible expense, but it may have been an expense that was originally going to be funded out of, out of general fund.
I'm trying to think of how that would work, so in the future, how that would work. I get, I get what you're trying to do, Oliver. I totally agree that money that's supposed to be spent on roads, I mean, we need money spent on roads in the city of Fresno. So I've been a huge proponent of that, so I have no problem with that. I'm trying to think how that would work in the future, or how that actually would work now. If this money came in, we said, hey, there's money available here, so let's back out general fund dollars out of our, yeah.
You, you just nailed it. So that's kind of the history of the organization. We, we get some, some new dollars and the general fund backs itself out. And then, we used, I can tell you, we've used a number of sources like that, particularly CDBG, Measure C, where we just use that to, to supplant, you know, the general fund dollars. And as a result, as a result, let's just say we spend 20 million dollars a year on road maintenance, which we don't, but let's just say we do about 20 million dollars this year.
Right.
And we have an additional 12 million that comes from the tax. What we would do is we would still just spend the, the 20 million, but we would just back out 8 million from the general fund. So instead of getting an extra, instead of getting that extra boost with the, the idea, with the, with the ideas, obviously, with the, with the tax, whether you disagree with it or not, that's the idea, is to give cities additional funds. We would simply just reduce our obligation to the general fund and re-divert those dollars someplace else. That's essentially what we do, what we've been doing for a very long time. So, and I think the city manager's kind of highlighting you different ways that that occurs. So the idea is to make sure that we don't do that. And it would be beyond us.
If I could also add, add, one of the underlying little nuances with this, this new source of revenue is that the city has to commit, and I think it's in FY19, that the maintenance, there's a maintenance of effort requirement. And it was something we used to have to do, then the rules changed and we stopped doing it. In other words, you have to commit at least two-plus million dollars. You have to demonstrate at least two-plus million dollars a year, and I think it's MOE is 1.3? Not 2 million? Okay. So there's a minimum of 1.3 of general fund money that you have to commit to street work, repaving, sidewalk repairs, in order to get the other 12 or 13 million dollars. So whatever general fund, potentially impacted the general fund, it would have to be north or in excess of that minimum requirement that's outlined in the legislation.
All right. Cool. Scott, I actually want to ask you a couple of questions about this then. this then. Okay, Scott, just give me an average number of how much we spent on road and street maintenance in the city of Fresno annually for the last decade.
Good morning. Scott Moos, your Public Works Department. It's really varied year by year predominantly because of federal funding that's gone into street work. This next budget year has $26 million going into street work. We do meet the maintenance of effort, the MOE is the acronym for that, at 1.3 million to go along with the new SB 1 revenue. Just year in, year out, it's anywhere typically about $10 million is in what we call operating funds of Measure C, gas tax, and that's things like pothole program, crack seal, slurry, neighborhood work. And then, we typically have grant money for the big jobs like a, like a repaving Hernan Avenue in District 2, or a Clovis Avenue in District 5, that, that type of work.
So, that comes in grant money, and that equals the 26 million that we're spending this year and in previous years?
Correct. And for example, this year, the 26 is a combination of the general fund, that's the MOE, Measure C, gas tax money, federal grants, and the CDBG. Totals up to 26.
All right, and last year, what was our total?
Uh, we'd have to, we'd have to pull that number. I suspect that was more in the range of about 18, 18 to 19 million. It was lower. Some of that just being due to the amount of federal grant funding the cities received through the COG and Caltrans process.
And have you ever seen, and you're dealing with a budget, when we get some, either a grant or federal dollars, that means that we don't dedicate the, we had previously planned on dedicating dollars to streets, now we're getting a certain grant, so we're going to pull out those other dedicated funds and use them somewhere else?
Not, not with respect to the general fund. It's extremely rare that we have general fund dollars that have gone into a major street, street repair type capital project. That's typically been a council neighborhood program. However, when we do receive federal funding for a major project, really, we tend to just go to the next project on the list.
Okay.
We say, that's great, here's, here's a big grant that's come in to repave a street, that's great, that stretches our local dollars that much further. And we tend, we actually tend to keep them in the street program.
All right. Okay, I think I've got the information I need. We have, now you're punched up now. Do you wish to speak again? Because we have a couple of, okay, we have Member Bretafeld, Member Capriolio, and then I have a couple. You're okay? Okay. That leaves you.
I'm okay.
Okay. All right.
Then I'll wrap it up.
Well, I wanted to ask a couple of questions too.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess it's for you and also city manager, if you want to join. Why supermajority? It just seems like that, that ties the, it really binds future councils down to, to, to what we're talking about today as the situation changes, as things change. Why supermajority? And I guess the same question for city manager, if that's going to hurt or, or.
Well, I'll answer it.
Okay, please.
I'm not exactly sure that's the question that's appropriate for the city manager answer. I mean, he can if he wants, but, because I wanted to make it difficult, extremely difficult for us to supplant those dollars. And like you and I and many people on this diet has supported in the past, particularly when it came to fiscal matters that we put on the ballot for the charter, they were all supermajority issues. You can remember the, the elements of Lee's, Lee's, Mayor Brandow, his acts were all supermajority. And it was done that way intentionally because we wanted to make it difficult for future councils to do something that could demonstrably harm the city. So, the idea is for this, for this motion is to ensure that we aren't supplanting in the future, bless you, in the future, we, we aren't supplanting dollars that were intended to go to street roads and maintenance. I happen to believe that street, street repair and street maintenance is a, is a pretty important issue. And a lot of, a lot of, a lot of our constituents feel strongly about having good streets and good roads and sidewalks and what have you. And I didn't want future folks to, to just come in and kind of willy-nilly be able to take that money out. I think a supermajority sends a strong message. When a supermajority of this body feels any certain way, then it would make sense, but I just didn't want it to be a simple majority. And I use the precedent of other issues we've done in the past that.
I think that, I think that, and I don't want to speak for my council colleagues, but I think that, that people are interested in this, and I think that folks could support this, and you may get a unanimous vote on this. But I think that what, I don't think that we have heartburn, but I think we're trying to look down the road and see, we're trying to think of something that might arise that we could be, that this organization could be hobbled by this. So, I think that's what it is, we're just moving slow. But I, I think it's great, it's, I like the idea of, of binding the council down to only spend it on roads maintenance. Because I was, Oliver and I were just talking about the days during the Autry administration, when the general fund had so much money that it was actually, we used general fund dollars on, on roads maintenance. And that hasn't occurred in a number of years, at least since Mayor Swearingen took office. It just, we can't afford it anymore. So, you know, those were the old days, and I, I understand what Councilmember Baines is trying to do here. I got to say, I really, I liked what Councilmember Bretafeld said. If you could find a, a way to do that, or a way, a way forward on that, I'd love to see the money go back to the people. But if, if we can't do that, you know, I'd like to, to see any ideas on how that could be accomplished. If we can't do that, it, it should go to roads. So, I, I think I'm there. I think I'm there.
So, if I could offer a suggestion?
Yeah.
Again, back to, we will be bringing back a five-year CIP, and you will, as a body, vote on that, that list of projects. And then, that will give Public Works essentially a roadmap, you know, how to face projects, environmental, and so that project list will include all of that, how that, these projects are going to be funded, because in some cases, it'll be multi-years. Perhaps the council and the council, the maker of the motion would want to consider that once that list is approved by council, that it takes a supermajority to change the funding assumptions contained in that list. And then, that would have to come back to council for, for approval. But once that list is set, it is, it is a commitment of this body and, and the council to go forward with those projects as presented by staff.
Am I up? Next, can? Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to finish up, and then we're going to start our, our second round on this. I guess I'm just trying to work, work it all out in my head and how, okay. Go ahead, Member Brandow, and then Member Bretafeld. So, okay, so, for me, I've really seen, you know, watching politics bounce back and forth, especially in recent years, the supermajority thing really gets goofy after a while. I've seen it abused, misused. So, I am more inclined to take, use that supermajority path, as Bruce just mentioned. So, once we, so I'm going to, for my support, I would like to, I'm going to offer, I'm going to ask you if you could amend your motion to say that, to unwind the capital improvements project, the CIP. So, once council votes on that, and it passes, then it would take a supermajority to unwind that, because Public Works would be well on their path.
I can tell you, yes, Councilmember Brandow, you're, that's the intent of what I'm trying to do, and you're.
But so, just that specific, because, okay.
Yeah, no, no, you, you, and I appreciate the city manager for offering a path, and I think I, I agree with what you're saying, the intent of, and I think, I think you guys know me well enough to know what my intent is and how we get there. And so, I appreciate that. I, I really don't want that when, you know, you're, any one of us are anticipating a project to come up, and then all of a sudden, oh, we don't have the money, or oh, this happened, and it's because of these supplanting things that happen. So, I am absolutely comfortable with including that provision, or that amendment, rather, as you, as you stuck in there.
Okay.
That once, once the body approves something, and we've identified the funding sources, that yes, it's locked in. And but for a supermajority, can we change it? I'm, I'm happy to make that amendment.
On this?
On this.
CIP?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the, particularly as we are talking about work for the SB 1 tax, when they're going to bring us their five-year plan, including that. I'm happy to, happy to, to make that amendment.
Okay, so you'll make the amendment to clarify that this is specifically dealing, that once the CIP has passed, Public Works begins, they're going, okay, now, now we, now we know what our list of projects, let's go out, we know the funding streams for them, let's go out and execute them. It would take a supermajority to unwind that.
Absolutely.
But only that, because I've seen supermajority concepts really backfire.
And honestly, Councilmember Brandow, thanks for the clarification, but that's precisely what it was for. And if, and if the, if I could have worded the motion that way originally, I probably would have. But I think that your, the added amendment clarifies what the intent, what the intent of the motion is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, really quick, city attorney, can, I just want to make sure we've included the amendment. Can, can we make sure we have the amendment in there, right, offered by Member Brandow?
Yes, so the motion would change to, instead of saying be restricted to contingency and removed and spent only upon a supermajority vote of the council, it would be say, we were saying the money will be spent per the CIP-approved list, which can be changed only through a supermajority vote.
Is that, yes, thank you. Thank you, city attorney.
Yes, I want to be clear. First and foremost, I don't support this SB 1, and it is my hope there is a statewide initiative to rescind it, and I hope that it's going to pass. And I, I think there's a very good chance it is going to pass, and the people will get to keep their money. If that fails, and we do get the money, it is my hope to see if the, there's the will of the council to return it to the citizens of Fresno who have paid that tax. And if not, it goes, it, it isn't general fund money, it goes into Public Works, I believe, and it is geared for that completely and entirely, and that's, that's where those funds should go. And if there isn't the will to return it, I would certainly support, obviously, those dollars being spent on roads. I do share the concern that you mentioned, Councilman Brandow, about the supermajority, and I, I still have that concern even with the motion, because there may be a need for a change after this is determined, and there may be the will of a majority to change it. But as you know, getting to a supermajority is a very difficult thing to do. So, making it a supermajority, I think, has a potential for unintended consequences down the road. That's, that's my struggle with it. I mean, I'd be more comfortable supporting this if we didn't have this supermajority. I'm not sure that there's a problem where somehow that got changed, and we need to create the supermajority because we can't trust council members to do the right thing. And that's what it almost feels like when we're saying we have to have a supermajority to, to change this.
You know, Councilman Bretafeld, if you don't mind me responding.
No, not at all.
And I, and I totally, and I agree, and that's why I was going down that line of questioning, because supermajorities can get really goofy. So, we agree on that. So, Councilman Bretafeld, what I'm thinking about in my mind is a project that we worked hard for, for almost probably two years, is that the repaving of Bullard Avenue, it was a heavy lift. It's much bigger than like, say, the neighborhood streets projects. And it took a lot of work with the county of Fresno. We had multiple meetings because part of Bullard is in the county, city, county, city, county. And we had to work closely with the county of Bullard. They had to make policy changes over there that allowed them to spend money on Bullard Avenue. And what I would hate, so what I'd hate to see is once you get committed to a project of that magnitude, that the council could come unwind that, and really, the council could really unwind that once council's committed to it. And because of political pressure, or somebody's mad at somebody up here on council, or somebody's upset, and, and then it really.
But where's that, has that happened? I mean, have we had something where a project was committed, millions of dollars were spent, and then it got unwound? I mean, I don't know if the city manager, do you, are you aware of it? Because, I mean, I'm not aware of it. And so, is there a problem that we're addressing, is there really a problem that doesn't exist that we're addressing?
There, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen it, but it's not outside the realm that it could happen, and it's not, and, and also, the supplanting of money. So, if we're truly going to get tax money, which you, gas tax money, which you and I fought against, and still continue to fight against.
Mm-hmm.
If, when that money comes into the city of Fresno, Councilman Bretafeld, this is exactly where I, where I was out on this. If that money is coming into Fresno, by the way, let me look at gas taxes in the bigger picture. One of the reasons that I've been against gas taxes, and I assume you are too, is because a lot of times, gas tax money gets diverted, and before you know it, you're refunding Jerry Brown's general fund pledge to something else, and it never gets spent on roads. That's the problem with taxes in California now. So, when it applies to the city of Fresno, I don't want to see that same mistake being made. So, if indeed, despite your and I opposition to gas tax increases, that money comes to the city of Fresno, I don't want to see those funds diverted into something other than roads and street improvements. So, and if, and if this can really add a line, support, Councilman Baines, if we can narrowly use the supermajority only on the CIP, I think I'm okay with that. But fundamentally, what I don't want to see, although we're, you and I are tax fighters, but now that the tax is here, I don't want to see that money that was meant to repave roads. Every council district in this city knows how under, overwhelmed we are with repaving roads.
What, what about the fact that if there were four council members that rescinded or tried to change it, it would be subject to Mayor Brand's veto, which would then require five votes to override that? So, why put that in place? We have, you know, checks and balances already with a mayor who can veto something that if, if he felt or she felt that it was the wrong thing to do, they'd veto it, and then you got to get a, five votes to override that.
Okay. Doug, they're asking, I'm being asked, asked you, is it, would it be subject to veto?
Changing the CIP list once it's approved? I can't recall whether the CIP, approval of the CIP list is subject to veto. It's probably considered administrative. But to the extent it would involve an AAR in amending the budget to redirect those funds, that would be subject to veto.
So, it's subject.
And would also require five votes.
It's subject to veto, because you're, you're shifting dollars.
It's subject to veto, so you're shifting dollars.
So, why create, one, a problem that hasn't arisen, and two, we have a checks and balances already with a mayoral veto, which would require five votes already to override it? I mean, the, the check is already there.
And Bruce, the CIP is a five-year plan?
That's what we're, I can get this microphone fixed someday. That's what we are proposing, is that we're going to bring back to you a five-year CIP. We're going to take these dollars, and we're going to allocate them over a five-year period, so all you can see where they're being spent, how they're being spent, the community can see how they're being spent. And then ultimately, the goal is for council to adopt this, so that we can move forward with everything from design, environmental engineering, and in some cases, especially those large projects. And when I say large, capital intensive, resource intensive, a phasing or a schedule of how these projects are going to be funded over an extended period of time.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm good.
I have a question for you, Bruce. How will you guys put together that CIP? Will you guys be meeting with each council district to consult also? What are some of the projects? I just don't want to get in a situation where you guys come up with a CIP without our input, and then, you know, we can't change anything.
We will meet with you.
Because, okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure. I don't want to, you know, vote on something, and then I'm stuck, you know, and then I have to get four other votes.
We, we will meet with you.
Okay, perfect.
City Attorney, I have a quick question procedurally. So, the, the rule that Councilmember Baines is interested in, the, should a future council decide to do away with that, would that require a supermajority or just a simple majority? The rule specifically.
Well, the council's approving this as part of the budget year. So, to change that in the future, first of all, it'd have to be done again next year as part of next year's budget, unless you want to do a standalone resolution separate from the budget. But if the council is approving something and saying that it's subject to a supermajority vote, then it would take a supermajority vote to change that.
In the future.
Right, correct.
Thanks.
Sorry, I forgot to make some additional comments. So, a couple of things I just want to add. It has happened, the supplanting, that's an issue that I've talked about with CDBG funding, rather than augmenting. We've utilized CDBG money, we know we're stretched, you know, thin with resources, but that, at least that's my opinion in how we've utilized the CDBG. So, I believe that that has happened. So, that's why, if we work with the administration and we put together the plan, I think I'm, I feel comfortable voting today for this. comfortable voting today for this, because it will protect, you know, what we put in place in a plan for five years. So, I'll be supportive of that. And I just want to make one point clear for the public, because I know that comments were made, you know, I know that some people are, you know, were really opposed to the tax and so forth. It passed, you know, the legislator got it passed. And so, I think that, I know that my colleague, you know, made comments about us returning the money. The reality is that I think it's impractical, and really, it's not feasible. How are you going to track those dollars, really, when you get them? And so, I think that it's not a, we would probably have to create a, some kind of government body, and then, you know, hire a consultant or something to do. So, it's going to cost us money to return the money. I think what is wise today is to talk about making sure that those dollars are spent the way that they're supposed to be spent, per the legislative law that passed SB 1. And so, I think that that's the conversation. If the public wants to take it a different route, they have the opportunity to do so, and then we will deal with it at that point. But I think today, the conversation should be, let's make sure that we're spending our taxpayer money wisely, and in those projects where they're having that expectation that they will be spent on.
Okay, round four. Member Bretafeld, and then Member Baines.
Yes, well, just in response to Councilmember Soria, yes, there are some challenges in terms of returning it, no question about it. And that's why I've asked the city attorney to look into it. And it may be impractical, if it is, it is. But I think it's certainly prudent of us to at least look at it and see if there's some means to do that. And I think according to the city attorney, there may be some ways to do that. I know we get very cavalier about it, but it is money that belongs to taxpayers. I don't know, I take it pretty seriously that the money comes to us from the people that are out there. And I think they basically get ripped off by having to pay 11 cents. And we ought to be concerned about those who can't really afford to pay 11 cents for every gallon of gas. It affects a lot of people in districts along here, and I'm concerned about that as well. So, I think we ought to see if there's some means to return it to the people, rather than just cavalierly not being concerned if we can do it or not.
Member Baines?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. And I know, I'm sorry, Mr. President, and I know this is my motion, and maybe or not, this will be the last couple of comments on this. I want to thank, first of all, Councilmember Brandow for adding the amendment. I think that that actually clarified the intent of the motion. So, Councilmember Brandow, I want to thank you for your line of questioning and the additional amendment. And City Manager, thank you for that advice as well, because I think that we've clarified what the idea is. I also just wanted to briefly respond, you know, I'm really struggling with my colleague's logic, and, you know, I can understand being against the tax. I think that, surprisingly, there are times I'm against taxes too. But I don't even know what that means when we want to return it to the taxpayer. I mean, these are, these are their dollars being returned directly to them in the form of projects. I think it's, I think it sounds good to say that we're going to return the money to the taxpayer, but I don't even know really what that means. Who would you give it to? How much would you give it to? Do you give it to drivers? Do you give it to non-drivers? Do you give it to people that ride the bus? I mean, I'm not even sure what that means, so, and I don't even think, you know, any of us know what that means. So, I'm having a hard time understanding the logic behind those statements when we're trying to, whether you agree with the tax or not, we're trying to find a useful, a purposeful use for it. And we're also trying to find the, struggling to find the intent of what we think our residents would want to see that money used for. You know, we want to see that money, they want to see that money, I believe, used for the roads just as much as we do. We struggle every year to make sure that we are doing what we can to improve our streets and roads and what have you. And I just think we should be very careful with using cavalier statements about, we're just going to return it to the taxpayer, as if we are not. You know, every dollar we spend up here, in some way, we're doing our best as thoughtful legislators to return these dollars to our taxpayers, to our citizens and our residents. And we should be careful about that. We should be careful making statements that are misleading, because I would never support taking the $12 million that's intended to go to streets and roads and giving a couple hundred dollars to every resident or so. I don't even know the formula in which we would do it, as opposed to spending that money and really improving, improving the road conditions of our city, which the public cries out about daily. You know, maybe not as much in your district, but certainly in mine. So, I just don't want people that are listening, the listening public, to think that we are not returning the dollars to you all. We're doing our best to ensure that the dollars are spent where we believe, one, they're mandated to go, and, secondly, where we believe you want it to go. So, I'm struggling with the logic, Councilmember, you know, candidly. And I know you won't be able to support it, and that's fine, I totally get it, but I just don't want the public to think that we're not, these are not dollars being spent on them, because every single one of these dollars, through this motion, we're ensuring is spent on the roads, the streets and roads that it's intended for. You know, very few times do we ensure that the public dollar that we get that's designed to go someplace actually goes there. This is the rare instance where we are ensuring that it, that the design and the intent of the fund goes precisely to where it was designed and intended to go. So, I hope that, you know, I know, like I said, I know it may not change many minds, but I hope that for folks out there listening, they understand what this council is struggling with. Very good discussion. It's, you know, anytime we ask for a supermajority, it should be debated, debated heavily. And like I said, I think the amendment clarifies the intent of what I had in mind. Thank you.
Well, okay, the screen is clear, and it's my prayer that it remains that way, so that we can all move on to the next two items, and we can get out of here. Member Baines, I can help you, I think, with understand where Member Bretafeld is coming from, because I'm going to support your motion today. I think it's a good idea, and so I'm going to support it. But I do believe that Member Bretafeld is right, and I can explain why. Because there is a difference between a progressive or graduated tax and a regressive tax. And what that means is the IRS, the income tax that we pay, is graduated. It's progressive, meaning the tax brackets are different for the top earners than the tax brackets are for the bottom earners. So, you have some people who pay nothing, and you have some people that pay a lot. But the people who are paying a lot don't feel it the way the people at the bottom of the bracket feel it. So, if I had to pay a $1,000 tax, or fee, or fine, or whatever, I write the check and move on. If my constituents had to pay a $1,000 tax, it would break them, probably lead to eviction, probably lead to some very serious economic problems in their family. And so, with the gas taxes, it's an example of a very regressive tax. I represent a district where my neighbors are struggling with poverty. And I represent a district where the annual household income is, what, $29,000, $35,000? That's with mom and dad both working, they're not making ends meet. And so, when our rulers in Sacramento pass a gas tax like this, what they've done is they have crippled the people that I represent in the city of Fresno, because a tank, a $65 tank of gas in my Dodge Ram Hemi engine is nothing to me. And I'm very blessed, and I thank God that I'm blessed, and my family is blessed. But the reality is, is that filling the tank, if you live at Cedar and Tillery in the city of Fresno, is crippling. And so, because we have folks who choose between a tank of gas or going to Food Max that day. And so, that's something that I'm very conscious of, and that's why I, that's why so often, that's why so often, people don't like to ride the bus. But that's why so often, no, and Bruce, there was no insult intended with that. But, and so, that's why I get so fired up, because I know my neighbors, and I'm very, they've been kind to me, I've been blessed to represent them. But when Sacramento does something like this, there's some kind of detachment where these people go up there and they think that they know what's best, well, they don't know what's best. And this gas tax is going to take millions of dollars out of their pockets to be sent up to Sacramento. So, that's why I agree with Member Bretafeld. But if it's coming back, I don't want politicians saying, oh, well, it goes better as this, it goes better as this, which is why I'm supporting your motion. So, that's where I'm at, and the topic of taxation gets me really fired up. And I do appreciate everyone being here and listening, and the great discussion, it was a good discussion. So, with that, the screen remains clear, and let's go ahead and cast our votes. Okay, it passes. Motion carries six to one. Thank you, council. All right, two more. This is Public Works, and this is, Member Chavez, include lane neighborhood street improvements in fiscal year 18 projects.
So, this was kind of related to what we were discussing with regards to investing in some of the neighborhoods. So, just kind of, I'm going to give some background for my council colleagues. This is the area east of the Fresno Fairgrounds, bordered by Butler, Kings Canyon, Maple, and Chestnut. And there's quite a bit of programs and services investment going on there, transitioning some folks from public assistance into full-time employment. And there's some interest in property in that area right by the school on developing that. So, I just wanted to flag it for the administration in the future. We can help with some of the infrastructure, street, Scott, where's Scott Moser? Thank you, I know that repaving Butler is looking really good. And then the other part that this would include would be the Kings Canyon Ventura corridor. We get about 1.2 million visitors to that area by way of the Fresno Fairgrounds, Mong New Year, the Home and Garden Show. And so, this is another opportunity to really spruce up that area and make it look good for folks that visit our city. And so, with that all submitted for consideration.
Member Capriolio?
Member Chavez, I was just curious about the cost of that, and then how do you fold that into the process, if you will?
Sure, so there's not a specific dollar amount. I think what we'll do is we'll sit down and identify it, maybe include it in the five-year plan as well, and look for some state, federal grants to leverage some dollars for that area. I just wanted to make sure that it was a priority for the administration during the process.
Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. Member Baines?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was a second, I'm happy to support. I completely understand what Councilmember Chavez is trying to do for his district here, have similar issues like that, so I'm happy to support, Councilmember.
Okay, the screen is clear. If there are no further comments or questions, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Move now to our final budget motion. Public Works carry over unspent funds from Melody Park Funds, and this was a motion made by Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Basically, the funds are almost totally spent at Melody Park. I had a discussion since this motion was made. And in fact, we need to amend, or I need to amend the motion and add $32,000 to the carryover, so we can sustain and continue the existing efforts and expenditures that are going on there. I've got Mountain View Church that's adopted the area, working with the parks, working with the city to keep that whole thing going, and I'd appreciate your support. So, the motion would be to not only carry over unspent, but add $32,000, and I hope Councilmember Baines would second that motion.
I'm happy to second it, Councilmember. I know, again, I know precisely what you're doing, I was your second, and I will remain so.
Is this, so tell me about Melody Park. Is this about ongoing expenses, or this is about capital improvements that will get finished with the $32,000?
It's a little bit of both. The entrance to the women's restroom had, from rain damage, mold, we had to correct that, couldn't use the restroom, the electricity was affected by the rains of this past winter. So, I think we've got that worked out with Bruce to get that going. And then it's that we added a new leader, if you will, a person, a student, to help the kids out there, continue with their projects, continue with the programming and the limited use of the, the computers are older than the ones we have here. But we're trying to keep all that going, keep the process going, because that's one of the few parks that I have that are actually doing great things for that neighborhood. It's a very old neighborhood, 60, 70-year-old neighborhood. So, this is the focal point of that area.
So, it's person, you need a person out there helping with the programming?
That, and programs, and just the continuing of improvements there, because it's been left behind.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the screen is clear, and this is it, folks. Unless anybody has... Makes what?
She has some new ones.
Oh, you have some new ones? All right. Go ahead, Member Soria. Do you want to make the motions now or after?
Can we vote on my?
Yeah, okay. Then the screen is clear, let's go ahead, please cast your votes. And this budget motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all very much.
All right, at this time, if any council members have additional motions, Member Soria?
I do. I have a couple of motions. So, I wanted to make a motion to carry over fiscal year 1617, $125,000 for the youth commission, and it includes some funds for the intern program. So, that is my motion, but I did want to add, so it's 125 that we're carrying over, and we've worked with the administration, this number, if you guys remember, the youth commission, folks, has partnered with YLI, and YLI is running the youth commission, and so they did ask for a little bit of funding, so that's included within the carryover. And this year, this summer, we are hiring young people to do internships here in the city. We put the announcement a few weeks ago, and it was very successful in getting the young people's attention. So, what I wanted to do, I wanted to increase the existing funding by 50,000. We got 1,300 applications. That's a lot. So, it tells us that there's a need and a demand for employment and employment opportunities for young people. This summer, we get to fund 30 positions, 30 part-time youth positions. So, this additional funding would also help to increase that number. So, the motion, again, would be that carry over of 125 for our youth commission programming money, and then an additional 50,000 for, to increase the number of slots for young people to have internships here in the city of Fresno.
A motion by Member Soria, and a second by Member Chavez. Our next speaker is Member Brandow.
Well, I was actually going to ask questions about that one.
Go ahead, please.
So, Councilmember Soria, on the carryover, clarify that for me. So, what actually is happening there? What did we vote on for them last year?
Over the last few years, we've allocated funds for the youth commission that, you know, was awarded to YLI, and so there's been unspent monies. So, we're carrying that money over to utilize it for this next year.
But not awarding new funds this year?
And then, I'm proposing to add 50,000 to the internship program that we started this summer.
And the internship program is run underneath the auspices of the youth commission?
No, the city is running that.
Okay, so that's separate, then?
Yes.
Okay, so there are two separate motions?
Well, we can take them as separate motions if you guys want.
I think it would be cleaner that way.
Okay.
Okay.
So, then the first motion would just be to carry over... So, should I give that number? Okay. So, Bruce just came over to tell me there's additional money in the carryover, so it's 191 that we could carry over? Is that correct?
Yeah, 191, but net of any payments or POs that we currently have in the process. But that's as of right now, but we're not, there may be some bills that we're waiting to pay, but whatever the net is after the 191.
Okay, so whatever the net is after the final bills that are in process, we are asking them to carry over. So, that money has been previously allocated, so what we want to do is carry it over to continue the youth commission work. So, it's money that has been unspent, carried over. And then, I was proposing that we added additional 50,000 for youth internships. We did get 1,300 applications, so there is a tremendous need, and we're only, this summer, only hiring about 30 young people.
Okay, so, Councilmember, for point of clarification, the funding the youth commission, doing, and doing another internship for this upcoming year, I think there's exist, if you carry over the 190, there should be sufficient... if you carry over the 190, there should be sufficient revenue to cover that, both cover the youth commission's work as well as the internships.
Okay.
So if it's, just roll it over and spend it on youth commission and fund internships for next year, then there's sufficient resources to do that.
And can we clarify, because the youth leadership institute, and I believe they probably met with the council members individually, they did ask for a bump because right now they had a part-time person doing, and so.
Yeah, my understanding is.
So would that be enough?
Yeah, my understanding is that this year was 50,000, but they want to add a permanent position. That adds another 29. So that's $79,000. Plus that then, so after you take that cost into account, there should be more than sufficient revenues to cover additional internships next year.
So then we'll do just, like you said, but whatever is left over. So it has already been appropriated previously. We're just trying to carry it over for the same purposes.
Well, I just had one comment on that. So, you know, I would really, I guess, really, for me to support this, I would have, prior to today, had to have a meeting with the youth commission or a workshop on their budget and what they're doing with their money. So to satisfy my understanding of what's going on with that money, why it wasn't spent, what they wanted to do that didn't get done, why they still need the money, or why they would need more money, I'd have to take a meeting with them or workshop, have them, I probably think that they should have given us a workshop. They were in here not too long ago for, you know, a real fun presentation, but we need to ask them about the money also.
So there was carryover because we had previously allocated. So what we've been doing every year is just carrying it over. So it was allocated for two years. So they've been drawing down per the agreement that they have with the city, but the dollars haven't been, the first year's dollars weren't spent, so we just continued to carry them over. That's what happened.
You know, this is what, this is the kind of stuff that I was, you know, so they have money in an account, and last week, all council districts were asked to give more money to the students to send them to an event, right?
Well, they asked, they asked actually Councilmember Olivier, they didn't ask, sorry, they asked Council President Olivier, they didn't ask us. They were making the ask to him directly. So that's different. And it was a sponsorship opportunity. I don't think these dollars can be used for sponsorship. It is more for the, their specific person that is running and doing the programming for the commission.
Okay.
So it's a separate issue.
I'm at the point where I have, you know, some questions. I'm gonna, I'll have a meeting with the youth commission, try and find out for my own, you know, what they're doing with that money. So I'm good. Thank you.
A number of council members punched up. Member Capriolio, and then Member Bretafeld, and then Member Baines.
Thank you. Along the lines of Member Brandow's questions, if we have $191,000 of carryover, I agree with him, we need to figure out that particular part of the equation. So I would support carry over 191, but not supporting new funds, because we don't know how this 191 is going and has been and will be. So I can support the carryover, but not the additional request.
Okay. And just as a matter of housekeeping, we are gonna hear them as two different motions. If Member Chavez, are you okay with seconding both of those motions? So we'll do the carryover. Is the carryover of the 190 including?
You know, let me ask a question, Council President. I think we only have the one motion on the floor right now, and I think the council member might.
I think we split it.
But are you just, are you gonna do two different motions or one motion?
I'll do two different motions on it. So I'll do the carryover.
Which is the 191. And then the other one, the other item for the internship is 50,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
It's an increase in funding.
So that's, so for a total of 241,000?
It's to increase budget for, the second one would be to increase budget for jobs. Yes, so the first motion is just the carryover.
Yeah, I have a question. City manager, on the youth commission, this was started last year, this 100,000?
It was actually started two years ago by the council.
So for this 100,000, what does the youth commission do?
The youth commission, and I'll let the council members who all have appointees, the intent of the youth commission was to look at opportunities to improve everything from parks and programming that's made available through the Parks Department for different youth, as well as how things such as an internship could be used to provide additional opportunities. But overall, they come in and they kind of look at what the Parks Department is doing in relation to everything else the city is doing, and they make recommendations to the various council members based on their observations and their work.
So we have youth who are doing an analysis of how the parks are operating and give feedback to the council members?
No. Okay, I've got others shaking their heads.
No, I'll do my best to simplify it. It's much more than that, Councilmember. The idea when the council formed the youth commission a couple of years ago was really to allow youth around the city, and every council district has one, and the mayor has an appointee as well, is to bring them into the leadership process and understand more along the line of what we do from their perspective. So they're able to bring issues that are central to youth around the city in every district, and they are, they are able to debate, analyze, and bring recommendations to us as almost a council member. So it really, the idea is to build leadership in our youth leaders around the city and to bring them into some policymaking roles, not just parks. The youth have a range of issues. I would certainly encourage you to meet with your appointee if you haven't had an opportunity already. Well, I'm glad you have, then you probably should have a pretty good understanding of program. But that's kind of more along the line of what it is, just kind of developing youth leadership and allowing them to do that with our blessing and kind of as, you know, our liaisons.
I support that. What I don't support is spending 100,000 to do it. Why can't we do exactly what you said, support our youth, provide assistance in leadership positions, have them work with us, provide us feedback? Why are we spending 100,000 or 140,000 to do that? I don't think we need to spend that money. I know if I was a young person, I had an opportunity to work with a council member, I'd have jumped at it, and I wouldn't have needed to be paid or had, I don't think they're getting it as much as probably the people who are running the youth leadership program. Is that where the 100, where's it going?
I think you guys took this microphone and did something with it. It'll probably work fine in about a month. Nevertheless, the cost of, and it's the $79,000, is that right now they have a part-time facilitator who helps convene the meetings, takes minutes, kind of, again, helps, like a mini-city manager, helps kind of facilitate the conversation amongst the commissioners. And that is primarily the biggest expense, and that is projected to go to a full-time position this year at 79,000.
But also, just clarify for purpose, 192,000 isn't entirely for YLI. There's a portion of it that is being used for summer jobs. Like, for example, this year, we are hiring 30 young people out of the 1,300 applicants again, and they'll have an opportunity to be in the various departments. I am extremely supportive of internships and paid internships, because I think that it's an opportunity for young people to learn how, to learn how to work, how to earn a hard dollar, and expose yourself to, you know, local government. I will say that my first paid gig was in the Public Works Department of the city of Lindsay. And so that, for me, changed my life. It exposed me, and I think that we owe it to our young people to allow them to provide those opportunities. And so these dollars will not only help YLI run the commission, but it also hires young people.
Well, I understand that. And I recall doing internships and not getting paid, because I got the experience. And, I mean, I think we offer real value to having people do work for us, or work in our offices, or provide us feedback. If we weren't in such tight constraints, if we didn't have such public safety needs, if we didn't need to hire police officers and replace fire engines that are failing, if we didn't need an SUV to have people come out and save lives when they have heart attacks, I would say, sure, let's just do this. But we have very many pressing needs in this city, and our priority, as we always talk about, is public safety, yet we're not making it that priority when we're spending money here. And again, I know the argument will be, well, you don't support youth, if you're not spending money. No, I support youth. I just think we have fiduciary responsibility to put the dollars that we get where they belong with public safety, making sure our city's safe, which it is not. And so I'm not gonna support this. I would like to see, actually, this program defunded, keep the program, but I just don't think we need to be hiring somebody full-time for 80,000 to run the youth commission program. I think it's an absolute waste of money, and it's, we're not committing the money to where it needs to be. Public safety.
This is also, with all due respect, this is also related to public safety. If we have our young people active early on and provide them the opportunity to earn a hard dollar, they won't be out in the streets stealing or doing whatever they need to do. And so this is providing young people the opportunity to keep them busy, which is why we fund parks. We need to think about public safety in broader terms, and not just about police and fire. You know, thank you to the chiefs for the work that they do with our departments, but public safety goes beyond fire and police. We need to also invest in our park system to offer programming to keep our young people busy. Young people are part of the equation, and so we need to invest in the future generations to really make a difference in our community. And so this is what it is. It's about an investment in our young people so that they can be productive citizens, taxpayer, taxpayers, so that we can continue to build the resources to invest in the other, in our police and our fire.
I'm in complete agreement that we need to invest in our youth, and we do. We have a police athletically, we have this program that I don't think we need to be funding to have the program. We need to make our city economically thriving so people have jobs for our youth. That'll help our youth. I just don't see using the city monies for a youth commission when we have such pressing needs, and yes, public safety, you know, when people want to call a police officer and they're not able to have them come out because they're at another high priority call, that affects the quality of our city. So I think this is not a good use of the money. We have more pressing needs, it should go to public safety, because we have tremendous needs there. And we talk about it every day, and we're in close session talking about it. We can't keep police officers, the attrition rate is unbelievable. So that's where I think our resources need to go.
Call for the question.
Thank you, but Member Baines wishes to speak. And then I have a couple of things I'd like to say, too.
I didn't notice.
Oh, no, it's okay. Steve's kind of a big guy, he blocked us out. Go ahead, Member Baines.
Steve, big guy, Brandow, all right. You know, I just wanted to say, just offer a couple thoughts to the council. You know, I think it's a good discussion whenever we talk about carryover funds. It's worthy to bring it up again, as I think we've been doing all day. But I do think, to some degree, we do have a commitment to keep our obligation, you know. So a couple of years ago, we did, you know, appropriate, we didn't appropriate it, but we approved these funds, you know, for our youth. And while every year, our needs are gonna change from year to year, of course, I don't think it's good policy for this body to kind of willy-nilly decide that we're not gonna keep our obligations. And I'm not saying it's willy-nilly completely, but, you know, our city isn't in bankruptcy. We're not, we're not as healthy as we'd like to be, but candidly, I don't know that that's gonna be the issue ever, probably in Fresno for some time. And so at some point, I think we have an obligation to just keep the commitments that we, that we say we're gonna keep. And so if we approved these funds a couple of years ago, and we approved them for a couple of years, I don't think Councilmember Soria is asking anything more than what this body has already committed itself to. So I'm fully supportive of that. You know, these aren't, these aren't even new dollars. These are the same dollars that we've already committed to our youth. I have a slightly different take on, you know, the importance of youth. I think that we do very little for our youth in this, in this city, and it's diminished over time. There was, there was a point some years ago where the city did run summer internship programs, a summer jobs program, and we've, you know, year by year, kind of pulled away from that. And so I think that it's okay for us to invest in some form of leadership training for our youth, which is what the YLI youth project allows us to do. So I think it's okay for us to support this. It's not new money. It's simply the money we've already said we were gonna spend on this. And I do think it's all a part of the public safety apparatus. I think, you know, I'm hopeful that this council doesn't get, turn into a council of cliches, which I'm becoming very worried about. I think that there are substantive issues that should be discussed, and we need to do more than have soundbite TV up here. We need, we need to, you know, we have tough decisions to make, and we do have an investment and a responsibility to the youth of this city. And we are always gonna have competing priorities in this city, every single year. It's never gonna change, but it doesn't mean that we don't try to do what we can. So every year, public safety's gonna be an issue. Well, I should say, every year, police and fire is gonna be an issue. Every year, our streets and roads are gonna be an issue. Every year, making sure that our parks are fully funded is gonna be an issue. All of those obligations are gonna stay the same. So none of that's ever gonna change. It doesn't relieve us of the obligation to continue to invest in our youth. So with that, I'm happy to support it, Councilmember.
You want to go ahead? Because I'm gonna say a few. Okay, the screen's clear, and I'm gonna make a couple of comments, and then, and then hopefully, we can take a vote after that. And I will be, speak as quickly as I can. The median household income in 93702, which I represent, is 26,180. The average household income in 93702, which I represent, household income with mom and dad working, is 34,153. And we want to pay a community organizer 80,000? That's almost three household incomes in 93702. I would like to say that the Youth Leadership Institute is something that I've always supported. When they had no money, I supported them with infrastructure funds from my district. I think they do great work. I've met with my appointees a number of times. I consider Yamalat to be a personal friend, someone who isn't just a friend, but someone who I admire. But I just wanted to share with my colleagues who I've told no. I told the Fresno Arts Council no, and I told them no because we didn't have the money. I told the Immigrant Defense people no, and I voted against that motion, because I don't believe this organization has 200,000 to spare for that purpose. Without bias or prejudice against the people who would be the beneficiaries of the money, I voted no, because we can't afford it. I voted no against Member Baines. No, you're gonna be okay. But I felt, I felt we didn't have the money for the industrial compatibility study, and that was a rollover. So I voted no on that. We have some challenging times ahead as our employee groups, our partners in collective bargaining, come forward looking for pay raises. And I believe, and I've said it before this morning, but I believe that we have an administration that is looking everywhere to provide the money so that our city employees can have their pay increases in the coming months and coming couple of years. And I think that this body needs to be very careful what we do, and we have to be very careful what we spend money on. If 80,000 is a lot of money for a community organizer and coordinator, and even though I love the commission, and I appreciate the idea of funding this commission, I think that the best thing we can do is to fund it out of our infrastructure budgets. That way, if Member Soria and I want to continue to pay the commission to have their meetings, then we could do that, but it would allow members like Member Bretafeld and perhaps Member Brandow to opt out of that program and not use their infrastructure money. So I am going to vote no on this item today, but I'm going to continue to use infrastructure dollars to, you know, where I can to help out, like I'm gonna pay for their, this group's meeting at Fresno State in the next couple of weeks. But I think that the price tag is just too much, and I'll be voting against it. Both of these motions, that we'll take separately. So with that, I thank you for those motions. Do you want to?
Thank you, council colleague. And just, so are you gonna be paying for the Fresno State?
Yes.
Or you're asking? Or you're asking still?
Yeah, I just, no, not asking anymore.
I'm glad that you're stepping up. Thank you.
You can help. Would you like to pay for half, Member Soria?
No, I've already have given my share for the other, so.
Oh, all right. So you're not stepping up. Okay.
No, I am. I'm making the motion.
The screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote. This is the first item. Thank you. This is carryover. And this one passes four to three. And let's, let's go ahead and vote electronically on the second one, please. This is the $50,000 to internships. And this one also passes four to, oh wait, this one fails by a vote of four to three. Counsel, do you have any more motions that you'd like to make?
Yes.
You have the floor.
I have a couple, just two more things. So one, I wanted to make a motion to fund for this next year, $200,000 for a pilot facade improvement program in the tower area. I know that we've had previously looked at also the downtown, so Fulton, the tower. I know that there's areas in Kings Canyon and then also District Four has some areas where we want to support some of our small businesses. Here in the city of Fresno, we pride ourselves in attempting to be business friendly and we have an array of incentive programs for the bigger businesses to, when they expand. And so we do an array of things like waive their fees and so forth to try to incentivize businesses. And what I just want to remind the council is that the small businesses make up over 50% of really the businesses in our community. And I think that we have an opportunity to show that we are supportive of small businesses. And so I'd just like to make that motion to do a pilot program for one year. Thank you.
Where's the money coming from, Councilmember Soria?
Oh, sorry. I forgot to mention that. So contingent upon carryover. So if there's any carryover for, at the end of this year when we true up, that would be contingent upon that. Thank you.
I'll second her consideration.
Yeah, please.
So facade improvement program for small businesses in the tower Fulton area, the Kings Canyon corridor, and also in the area for District Four. That's the motion. Facade improvement program, and it would be a one-year pilot contingent upon us having carryover to support small businesses.
Member, for clarification, would it be consistent with those previous programs in which it required a 50% contribution from the business owner?
Yes, we would have a match requirement.
So the ultimate price tag, we, what it's going to cost, the general fund, we don't know yet? Or we do have an idea?
No, we're capping it. $200,000 is the cap and it's, it's a pilot program and depending on the carryover. Yeah, so it would be a match. And we've done this previously.
So could you make this motion citywide?
Are you interested in, in supporting a facade improvement program in your area?
Well, I'm interested in supporting small business. So I, I'm.
I just wanted to, so what the intent was to do pilot and pick sections of the city where some of the small businesses could benefit from the facade improvement. And so that's what we were attempting. But if, if you want to do it citywide, I would be open to seeing. And we'll probably have to figure out the requirements. So when we bring it back, if there is carryover money, we would set the criteria at that point.
Okay, I'm going to be open to listening to what my colleagues say, but.
If you're willing to support it, I, I am willing to entertain the idea of doing it citywide.
All right, let's revisit that in a minute. I think there's a couple others punched up.
Yeah, so facade improvements for stores, shops, facades outside. And this would be $200,000 from the general fund and some carryover monies, correct? And which districts did you allude to?
District, so I pointed out to the tower district area, Fulton Mall, because in the Fulton Mall, I know that they had attempted to do this before. Kings Canyon corridor and, and District Four.
Why those areas?
There was, there was interest in those areas and so.
There's interest from who? What do you mean there's interest?
Like businesses in terms of trying to help small, support, support the small business community.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's a wonderful thing, but I mean, there's thousands of businesses that would love to have facade improvements where they pay half, half and the city pay the other half. I guarantee you in District Six, in my district northeast, we have lots of businesses that would love to improve, have facade improvements where the city would help them. I imagine it would be the same with Council President Olivier. Do you have businesses in your district that might like facade improvements and a 50% reduction on paying that facade improvement with the city? I imagine you do. I imagine Councilmember Brandow does. Once this starts, where does it, where does it end and how far do we go and?
Well, there's a cap on the dollars. So once the dollars are exhausted, then that's the, and it's a one-year program. So if we're able to get through the $200,000, that's where it stops.
Again, I, I know we have Chief Donnis in the audience. We've talked about getting an SUV to help people who are having heart attacks and you don't have the money. We could use the money for that. That would be a good use of the money. I support small business. We all do. We all want to help people. I just don't think this is a wise use of $200,000. If we've got a carryover of $200,000, we ought to buy that SUV so we don't have fire trucks going out on emergencies. $200,000 gets us two more cops. $200,000 provides better incentives for police officers so we don't lose them through attrition. I don't know, these programs, they're good. I mean, I'm not saying they're not. We want to help small businesses, but it's misguided in my opinion. It's just misguided. And the fact is, we all have businesses that could use assistance from the city if they're going to do a 50% reduction on facade improvements.
Well, we do, and we do an array of incentives already. Most of the businesses that benefit from the incentives are always bigger businesses. And so my, the goal really here is to provide an incentive for small businesses. And I know that you say, you know, we could use one-time dollars to purchase a truck or a van, whatever that may be. I'll remind, I'll remind my colleagues, and this is, these are comments also made by the mayor when providing his expansion act and promoting new companies incoming. If we're supporting our small business and it attracts new, new companies to come here, we're going to create new jobs. If we're helping our small businesses improve their facades and attracting more clientele, guess what? That's more sales tax. And so that's going to up our revenues as well. So I think this is a modest investment in helping some of those small businesses. That will essentially also help in increasing some sales tax and then those benefits will come to the city of Fresno.
I know, but you mentioned modest investment. You mentioned modest investment with the $200,000 for the legal fund, which was $200,000. This is $200,000. The youth commission's $100,000. So we're now at a half a million dollars of these modest investments. A half a million dollars gets us a lot in terms of public safety and fire safety. So again, I just think it's an inappropriate use of the funds and we ought to be using it for the real priorities that we have in the city. That's all.
Member Brandow.
So for me, I think this is very interesting. It's some, it's a concept that I've been working in, working on as well. So I would like to have an offline conversation with you, Councilmember Soria. It's very interesting to spur small business development in the city of Fresno. Now today, we're voting on some, today, we don't have the parameters spelled out. I would, for me, this is something I'd almost like to see almost all of the parameters spelled out. Let me give an example. We gave great tax breaks to Amazon. We had a, we had a groundbreaking yesterday, but we required of them a certain number of job increases in the city of Fresno. I would be very supportive, I am very supportive of small business, as a small business owner. And I think sometimes we overlook our small businesses and focus on our big businesses. But I would like to see this, Councilmember Soria. So I'm, I'm inclined to vote no today, right in the middle of these budget talks on this pilot program, but I could easily see myself very supportive of a similar endeavor if it was completely fleshed out. For instance, and a small example is, does the small business that we chose, that we choose to put a facade, are they going to hire one person? I mean, those type of parameters would make the use of tax dollars more valuable. That's similar to what, that's kind of a scaled down version of what we've done with Amazon and Ulta and some of the other big projects. So I've been thinking about this very much, but I don't want to support it without knowing a lot of the details. So that's where I'm at today. And I could easily see myself coming back, even if it meant appropriating money after this budget is passed. But trying to figure it out on the fly is something that, and City Manager, you got your microphone working there?
Yeah, barely. Given that what we're talking about are potential carryover dollars and carryover in excess of what we have outlined in, in the budget, it might be an opportunity for you because it's not, the adoption of the budget is not contingent upon these dollars being appropriated right now. As I've mentioned, we will also be coming forward like we did last year with a very long list of deferred capital investment. Remember tier one, tier two? So that would give council time to work through the nuances of a program. And then when we present our tier one, tier two, we'll first of all know exactly how much of a carryover, if any. You'll also have a better idea because it'll be our version of the mid-year. We'll have a better idea how expenses are tracking, how revenues are tracking. We'll know whether or not there's a referendum in November that's been, that has eliminated SB one. There's a lot of things that happens in the next six months, but my point is when we come back with the tier one list of projects, the council can look at those carryover dollars, look at the list of deferred investment or deferred maintenance in light of everything else. And then if you want to at that time, obligate the $200,000, you could certainly do so at that time. And that would give you, the council ample opportunity to work on nailing down or defining the parameters of a program.
And Bruce, just because we make the motion today doesn't mean that we have the guidelines spelled out. The guidelines could always be spelled out at a later time. Is that correct?
Right, that's what I'm saying. When we come back with the mid, mid-year with what, what the carryover is and we also have a better idea, as we did with the tier one and tier two, you can vote on the tier one, tier two in addition to this if you choose to add that to, to the list of things that could be funded with the carryover.
Okay, is there someone else?
Member Baines wishes to speak and then I'll go.
Yeah, I want to, I want to follow up on both Councilmember Brandow's and the City Manager's comments. Councilmember, I think that there's a lot of support on this, on this diet for this, for a whole host of reasons. And I'm wondering if an approach you may consider, slightly changing your motion today to move this into the tier one queue for when we, when we do actually get it, a carryover and it allows us the time to work on the program. You know, and if, and I think it's perfectly in line with what the City Manager is suggesting and to some degree, I think it's, it's closer in line to what Councilmember Brandow is suggesting. And that way, we just really just have a placeholder when the carryover comes and it, and it gives us a chance to.
To come back.
To, to work on the program. Councilmember Brandow, I don't know if you got a chance to hear that, but I asked Councilmember Soria to maybe amend what she's, what her thoughts were today, to just do a placeholder for this, for the administration when it comes back in tier one. But then it gives us an opportunity in the meantime to work out, you know, offline to work out what, what the parameters of a program like that would be. And then, then we can make a final decision, you know, sometime in, sometime in the future. That would be my suggestion.
That works. I would amend. I would be happy to.
No, not appropriate today.
Not appropriate funds today, but make it a priority in.
Yeah, exactly. You know, give direction to the administration that we want this to be a tier one priority and it gives us the ability, you know, when that carryover money comes back for us to have discussed it by then. And then we can, we can take a final vote at that point, you know, based on what we bring forth.
I agree.
So there.
So do, we need a vote on that or just?
You're just going to withdraw it?
I think we can just give direction to the administration. I think they heard it.
Yes.
Right.
We got it.
Perfect.
Okay, so there, there won't be a vote on that.
And just one last motion?
Can I, I just wanted to kind of, it's, I have someone in, in my district who charges people a lot of money to repair exotic cars. This small business owner makes a fortune to fix rich people's exotic cars. This small business owner has requested help fixing his facade. So if I vote for this today or anytime, or a motion that's like this, an item that's like this, I have crackheads throwing syringes in my parks and I have a park infrastructure that is failing in District Seven. And I have parks in need of park rangers in District Seven. So voting, what's that? Oh, I'd love to make a motion, trust me. But if I vote for this motion or another motion like it, that means I'm telling my constituents that my rich buddy who fixes rich people's exotic cars takes priority over their park, their park bathroom. And so, you know, before this item comes back, I can already tell you that I'm going to be opposed to it because the, well, no, I'm, I'm opposed to giving, I mean, how much does $200,000 buy? Like, how much is a facade these days? Like, how much does that cost? So that, that's telling my constituents that I'm prioritizing a rich dude's, rich customers over their inner-city urban park. And I can, I can't do it. So when it comes back, I'm going to be a no vote on that because I think that's a bad use of taxpayers' money. So let's go ahead and finish up. Any other motions, folks?
One last motion. Thank you, Council President. So the last motion, I'd like to make $100,000 to be added to the City Attorney's Office budget for any salary increases within the next fiscal year.
I'd like to second that.
Does anybody have any, any comments or go ahead and vote? City Attorney, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to add? The motion is for $100,000 to be put into City Attorney's Office for pay raises. City Attorney, do you want to address that?
Nothing to add. I added this at the, discussed this at the budget presentation, reduced the amount from 175 to 100. And I would commit that any savings would be committed to be used for code enforcement.
Is there a second? Okay, Member Brettafeld, you have a motion, second. The screen is clear.
I just want to be clear, we're voting on, you're reducing the amount from 175 to 100?
Yes, I think 100 is a good number to use.
Oh, okay. So there was a, there was something in your budget already for 175?
When we did our budget presentation originally, I had asked for 175,000.
Okay, got it.
All right, the screen's clear. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries, six yes, one no. Does anyone else have any budget motions or snarky comments?
I have, I have some questions, Council President.
Member Brandow, go ahead.
Unrelated to a current motion, but could build into a motion. I'd like to ask Jane a couple of questions about the budget while we're meeting today. Jane, on page 200 of the line item budget, inside of facts, the facts budget, on page 200, give you a second to get to that. Item about sixth from the bottom, 53302.
Yes.
Professional services consulting dash outside.
Yes.
There's a million dollars on that line item. And so could you tell me about that item?
I would.
So I can handle that one.
Oh, okay.
The million dollars, and as I shared in my presentation earlier, the million dollars was set aside to hire.
was set aside to hire a consulting firm to identify some locations in which bus turnarounds could be acquired. And bus turnarounds is rather than having the bus go all the way around a very secure to sometimes long route to get back to the point in which it returns, such as Shaw Avenue. I am, these are grant dollars. I think they're Prop 1B dollars. Make a long story short, Councilmember, the department will probably be going through a number of changes. This is one of them. Given all the other priorities and needs within FACS, I can commit to you right now that that million dollars will probably be used on other capital improvements, such as improving pasture amenities or things like that, because again, these are capital dollars. I can't use them to go necessarily increase service anywhere, but I can commit to you that the million dollars that's set aside for consulting for that particular effort is not gonna go forward.
It's not gonna go forward?
Correct.
So, why do we have it there, then?
Because I didn't create this budget. I inherited this particular budget.
Okay. So, let, let me ask first, Bruce, then, remind me, where, where's the million dollars come from?
The million dollars is, I believe, is Prop 1B. It's, it's dollars that was allocated by the state when, with, when they issued bonds, so they're for capital improvements, such as acquiring buses, acquiring property right of way, or hiring consultants, as long as that consultant is being used ultimately to support a capital project.
Yeah, it's a transit grant. It is not general fund.
It's a transit grant?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty much understood. There's no general fund going into FACS. It's just the opposite.
I understand, I understand. Okay, so that's a transit grant, but it's really, you've got a million dollars on this line, and in reality, what you're telling me today is probably not gonna be used for consultant for turnarounds.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I have another question, Jane. On page 61, under FIRE. And so, Bruce, you and I are gonna have to talk a little bit more about that. On 61, under FIRE, under the general fund section, the very last item, 61001.
Yes.
Contingency reserve. We've got $700,000 there.
Yes.
Tell me about that.
That was, that's for the North Central. That's in, in case we actually have to pull the trigger and cancel the, the contract, then that extra cost will be moved up into a line item that will allow them to pay the salaries of those firefighters coming back over from North Central.
So, tell me one more time, Jane, so...
Well, it's, it's to pay the North Central positions, because right now, those, those positions are funded out of the North Central Fund.
Yes.
And if we actually end the contract, those individuals will have to come back to the general fund, and this is the partial year of funding that will support those positions when they come back to the general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Cool. So, I wasn't too sure, so I had a couple lines there that I wanted to ask questions on. So, Council President, today was the day to vote on the motions that will be included in the final budget. This is, in our final budget vote is Thursday morning. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and then, but we can still make motions as late as Thursday morning?
Yes.
Okay. And then tomorrow, you have a placeholder on our agenda for council budget hearings. Do you think that we're gonna be here tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
But be careful what kind of motion you make, because you might trigger me.
No, I, at this point, I think I might trigger... With all due respect, today was the day in which council was gonna hear and vote on motions, and then take a motion to adopt the budget as amended.
Correct. Right. But City Attorney, we can make motions and then change the budget up until we approve the budget, correct?
Legally, there is that opportunity, yes.
So, is it necessar, so on Thursday morning, can, on Thursday morning, Doug, can we just make the motion to adopt the budget?
Typically, yes, that's what's done.
And so, what did you want, what did you think we're doing today, Bruce?
The City Attorney is hoping that this is the end of it, right?
Well, the City Manager was thinking that, as we have, I, I understand that there's the legal ability to do that. I think the administration was hoping that we have vetted through all the issues and that we've answered the questions, and that the, any adjustments that the council wanted to make were gonna be done today, and there was ultimately going to be a motion to adopt the mayor's budget as amended.
Right. What, what we will do now, my staff and I will go back, and we will change the enabling documents to reflect what you have done in council chambers today, the changes that you have requested and, and approved to be made. So, we will go back, and we will prepare the annual appropriation resolution, the, the position authorization resolution, and the other enabling documents that you will pass on Thursday morning. And so, we were hoping that these motions would be the extent of the changes that we would have to make to the enabling documents. If you make additional changes on Thursday, then you would have to pass the AR as amended, and then we'd have to go back again and make additional changes to reflect whatever motions you would pass on Thursday morning.
So, Jane, on Thursday, if we pass a motion, so I'm trying to get out of bringing council back here tomorrow.
No, you will not be, you will not be back here tomorrow.
What's that?
We were not scheduled for budget hearings tomorrow, to my knowledge.
I thought budget hearings were...
So, if you make any subsequent changes on Thursday, then the final adoption...
Be as amended.
As amended on the 29th?
You could, or you could just pass it as amended, and then they wouldn't have to come back. You've done that before.
Yeah. So, Thursday doesn't have to be a nightmare day. We could make a motion and, and pass it as amended.
You can.
Okay. Was I incorrect, Council President? I, on my calendar, I have tomorrow as budget overflow if needed, or something like that.
Yeah, but it, there's nothing needed.
Okay.
So, we, we were able to finish before lunch on, on today, but yeah, I think it was originally blocked out.
And I just want to add really quickly that, that legally, we can't adopt the budget today, anyway. We haven't, we have not agendized to take that action today.
No, for sure.
We, we have to do it on, on Thursday, legally, so just to, I just wanted to add that, that we have to adopt it on Thursday, anyway.
But there's a, there's a mechanism between those two things.
Yeah, we could, we could adopt it as amended, if, if there are amendments on Thursday as well.
It's a motion, motion to adopt as amended, which would come back on Thursday.
No, it would, it would be passed on Thursday, because the, the enabling documents are agendized on Thursday, and so we will prepare the enabling documents based on these motions that you have passed today. We will prepare those documents for you to actually vote on, on Thursday morning at nine o'clock. And if you come back Thursday morning at nine o'clock and you make an additional change to those documents, then you can pass it, I suppose, as amended, and then it would not have to come back again on the 20...
Ninth or whenever.
Ninth, for your approval.
All right. All right, thank you.